Before we begin the meeting today, I'd like to remind staff, council members and the public of the importance of upholding proper decorum in the council chambers as outlined in the township's procedural bylaw. We ask that all participants act with respect and professionalism throughout the meeting. This includes avoiding interruptions, directing all remarks to the chair, and using a respectful tone and discussion. Our goal is to create a productive and respectful space for open dialogue, ensuring all voices are heard in an organized manner. Today, we have a public meeting at 1:00 PM for the area planning board. Next is disclosure of pecuniary interests. Seeing none, we'll move on to our closed meeting portion. Do have to read it here, where to go? Sorry. I don't see. Do I have to be enclosed to get it? Yeah. Okay, sorry. Had to be on notes, okay. Now therefore be resolved, the committee of the whole move into closed meeting at 9:16 AM. Pursuant to section 239, parentheses two, parentheses C, parentheses K, and 3.1 of Municipal Act 2001 SO 2001 C25 is amended to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition disposition of land by the municipality or local board. A position plan, procedure criteria, or instruction to be applied to any... And it's not, let me see the rest. Click on the button. It won't scroll up. I'm in open. Applied to any? You have to read it through the mic down too.
Applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board Indigenous relations training for members of council.
All those, can I move for a second please? Moved by Tom, second by Earl. Any discussions seeing none, all those in favor, carried, we are now enclosed. Okay. All right, Scott?
Okay, thank you very much. First, I'd like to acknowledge what we're, today, we're going to talk about the Skarivore community application for a pavilion on the land that we provided in 2013. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we do have the SRA vice president and resident of Skarivore, Tony Gale, here. And I have to remind myself that we're not to engage, Mr. Gale. This is not a deputation or delegation, but but I wanted, I wanted to share with you in the history of this, that I think it was before council that Skarivore community on behalf of the whole community had applied to the NOHF to actually build a pavilion to support their four-season activities, which they've been doing for several decades on this particular property. That initial application was turned down at about the same time as raising the roof on and party barrel, was identified that that it looked to be the benefit of a small number of the community and not the community at large. So in the spirit of that, certainly did some research. And I might add that the residents of Skarivore have a file about this big, which we don't possess, but for your benefit and in your package, included the bylaws. The bylaw that actually supported this long-held aspiration for a neighborhood meeting place that could have a four-season kind of capability. Was a wisdom of council back in 2013 to sell one of the pieces of vacant land in Skarivore that the township held under title for the princely sum of $2. The TOA further zoned that land from residential to a classification community facility, meaning CF. And the bylaw on zoning change are attached to your package. And I wanted to thank Clerk Martin and Director Henderson and CEO McKinnon for the pursuit of this documentation was not always easy, as much of it isn't digitized yet. But anyways, it's there for you. It's there for you to consider. So through our research, council can state with confidence to the province that it was and is the intention of the Skarivore, for the Skarivore community to manage and use this land for the benefit of all residents of Skarivore and in their engagement with Shawnee Go First Nation. And for all residents of the township of the archipelago. The SRA in effect are caretakers, the stewards, the land, and they're also the catalyst for all to enjoy, whether you're a member of the residents association. So this relieved staff, I believe, in the initial discussions, actually having to maintain this property as we do with other parts of our settlement area. So this community has had a long history of self-funding infrastructure, including that the other parts of the township would only take for granted. And that includes a paid half of the Skarivore road along with the province and receive no township funds in that effort. So I'm asking on behalf of Council Manners and I is that we've created a resolution that we would adopt that tomorrow. That simply outlines that the community focus on this land for the purposes of the NOHF application is for the SRA to build a modest pavilion to house the four-season community activities. It's held since 2013. We urge that the NOHF recognize the use for all the community and that this resolution confirms this historical and current view. My apologies to Reeve Liverance, should it be your wisdom to accept this resolution? My apologies to Reeve Liverance for having to actually read this. Read this resolution tomorrow and I, should you choose to adopt, I'd be happy to sub in for you Reeve Liverance as being the author of this very lengthy resolution, detailed resolution.
Council and their wisdom has allowed me to skip reading that the resolutions in full in the past as well.
Well, they didn't allow me last time. Anyways, it's in your package, your consideration, I'd like to put forward, look to put forward this resolution tomorrow. Kind of skipping the notice of motion, but timing is of the essence on this application. As we've heard from the province, it's time to get this in.
When is the NOHF C deadline, do we know?
Our guidance is get it in before the end of the year, but in particularly by early December. Funds are running out and the governance schedule. So we've held, thankfully with CEO McKinnon and Council Manners, we've held a recent review of the application. And this would be a necessary part for, I believe, I would assert, anyways, thank you.
Would it be possible, do we think that since we're copying Chief Powis, the First Nation, that they would pass a resolution of this nature as well, or no?
I would, I would have to raise that with Shawnee First Nation. I know Skarivore has been residents, so Ray Pears has been reaching out as we have. But I, we could certainly ask for that. It's firmly in the application and it's firmly asked whether there is First Nations engagement. And SRA has done that, thank you.
Tom?
I would just add, speaking in favor, as far as timeline scope, the NOHF C fiscal year ends on March 31st, so you're trying to catch this fiscal year, correct?
Laurie?
Also, the NOHF C includes the Muskoka areas now where it didn't in the past, so there is less funding.
All are more reason to get it in sooner rather than later and get as much support as we can so we can get the Shawnee Go First Nation to support this as well, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, with permission of council and our Reeve, I would like to approach, yes, I would like to approach our MVP Grayden Smith and others to apprise the importance of this to the township and our, our general community as well as the SRA, thank you.
Do we know if the NOHF C makes decisions before March about the granting of funds? Or do they wait to March to grant the funds?
My understanding and from working with the, one of our all raised the roof committee is that there's so much funding there and as Laurie said, now they've expanded this, the size of the geographic area. It's not like there's less funding because they're covering more area. There's so many dollars per fiscal year. And all I was pointing at was their fiscal year runs April 1st to March 31st. So if you make your application to catch this fiscal year, first you've determined eligibility and you, and you put your fund application in. If the grant was denied because the funds run out, my understanding is you could immediately reapply on April 1st.
So it sounds like it is a first come, first served.
Definitely it is, yes.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is we do have the delegations at the Roma Conference. It may be, may be too late at that point in time to make an appeal for support for the NOHF C grant for this purpose. So I think that it does make sense to go ahead and bring this forward tomorrow for council consideration.
Thank you Reeve Liverance.
I'm just drawing, Laurie and I are drawing a blank on a name, but there you have it, a executive director coordinator right here in Perry Sound. Pardon? Dustin Turner, you should reach out to him. Oh, you already have? Okay, great.
And I would say in the history of this file, Mr. Turner expressed to the SRA some curiosity on why the first application was turned down. I, so would be prudent for all that we assert that the township supports the notion of a four-season community pavilion that supports that neighborhood and is available to all of us, including the township itself in our meetings with, with our community by ward representatives and staff. So I thank you.
Very good, thank you. So we have about 15 minutes left. We'll go back to closed to address the other issues that were enclosed. Do I need to read, do I need to reread the? Okay. Okay. So speaking of, yeah, but it's still not reaching all the way down, look at that. Why is it not?
Are you in open?
Yeah. Yeah, look at that, how come I won't go there? Do I need to go? Oh, by close details, okay. Now therefore be resolved that the committee of the whole move into closed meeting at 11:44 AM pursuant to section 239, parentheses two, parentheses C, parentheses K, and 3.1 of the Municipal Act 2001 SO 2001 C25 is amended to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by a municipality or local board. A position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on behalf or carried on or behalf of the municipality or local board Indigenous relations training or fromers of council. Can I move over a second please? Moved by Tom, second by Scott, all those in favor, we are now enclosed.
We're out, closed.
So I would like to welcome everyone to the meeting today and I'd like to apologize to our guests for the delay that we had today. We had some unexpected issues and a closed session that we needed to deal with. So I do apologize that we're starting a bit late. But the Archipelago Area Planning Board consists of six councillors and two provincial appointees. We consider applications for consent within the archipelago township and the unincorporated townships to the north as well as subdivision and condominium applications within the archipelago township. Today, we have two applications for consideration in one administrative matter that we will need to attend to later on in the meeting. First off is the approval of the agenda. Now therefore be it resolved that the agenda for the November 20th, 2025 meeting of the Archipelago Area Planning Board be approved. May I have a mover, moved by Tom, seconded by Dan, all those in favor, carry. Does any member of the board believe they have a conflict of interest with any of the issues to be dealt with today? I see none. Adoption of the minutes is the next item on the agenda. Now therefore be it resolved, the minutes of the Archipelago Area Planning Board meeting held on September the 18th be approved as circulated. May I have a mover and seconder? Moved by Tom, seconded by David, all those in favor, carried. So we have no delegations today. And we have two public hearings. The Secretary Treasurer, Mr. Henderson will advise as to when, how, and to whom notices of the public hearing were circulated. The planner, Mr. Stone, will then summarize the proposals as well as inform the board of any correspondence that has been received. He will also provide any other information which is relevant to the application. From there, the applicant or the agent will be provided the opportunity to make a presentation followed by questions or presentation from the public, either in support of or in opposition to the proposal if they are in attendance. Board members will then have the opportunity to question the applicant, the agent, Mr. Stone, or anyone giving a presentation. Once that's been concluded, the proposed consent will be considered by the board. So this is application or peer, excuse me, public hearing for applications number B04-25 and B number 05-25. Mr. Henderson will now discuss the notice, notices that were circulated for today's meeting, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you Chair Frost. Notices of the hearing were sent by mail to the owners of land within 60 meters of the properties and to those persons and agencies as directed by the Planning Act. They were also posted on the township's website and in the township office. The notices were circulated in October 29th, being more than 14 days prior to this meeting. Included with the notice were summaries of the proposed easement as well as a sketchy key map showing the locations of the property. Thank you.
Steve, will you now make your presentation?
Thank you Chair Frost and to the members of the board, if you pay attention to the slide presentation. I'm going to fast forward and do two presentations in one as these consents be 0425 and be 0525 related. They're dealing with rights away across these properties, next slide please. So in summary, if you look at the properties, eight and 10 Woods Bay Lane properties are located in the Woods Bay neighborhood. The subject properties are accessed by a shared driveway from Woods Bay Lane. The purposes, the purpose of the applications is to permit rights away over the shared driveway. And the subject properties are both zone coastal island residential in the comprehensive zoning power, next slide. So this just provides you with a context of the neighborhood. So this is Eight Woods Bay highlighted in red. And it basically shows the subject property and a benefiting property which is 10, next slide. So it's a reverse, so the subject property is now 10 Woods Bay with the benefiting property being Eight Woods Bay, thank you, next slide. So here you can see on Eight Woods Bay is the small bit of right of way that's benefiting the property to the south, highlighted in blue. And next slide, it shows the next bit of right of way that's benefiting Eight Woods Bay. Thank you, next slide. So just to give you a sort of visual perspective, so we're now standing on 10 Woods Bay looking more or less to the south. And that is the shared driveway that both property owners use now, next line. And it terminates on 10 and hooks back into Eight Woods Bay as well, next slide. So from an area perspective, you see that Eight Woods Lane is a very heavily wooded property, next line. And similarly, Eight, 10 Woods Lane is also heavily wooded as well, next slide. So in review, the right, rights way are located in an existing driveway that provides access to Woods Bay Lane. There's no changes to the existing driveway. And the right of way will legalize an existing access to the cottages at both Eight and 10 Woods Bay respectively, next slide. There was no correspondence received. And in conclusion, the board may approve consents B0425 and B025, or sorry, B0525. As they are consistent with the permission planning statement that conforms to the relevant policies of the Fisher Plan, complies with zoning bylaw and is in keeping with good planning practices. Next slide, I think that is it, thank you. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation Steve. Now at this point, do either the applicants have a comment or presentation they would like to make?
No, I'm good for all perspective, thank you. Well, Sulker speaking.
It's fine, it's all, it's all there in the paperwork.
Thank you. At this point, do our committee members have any questions that they would like to raise? Steve? At this point, do you have any further comments that you would like to make?
Yes.
Thank you, so at this point. The committee will vote on the applications as have been presented. So application number B05-25 Gates. Actually, I'll do Sulker's first. Provide an easement be approved subject to the conditions as outlined in the decision. May I have a mover and seconder of that? Moved by Tom, seconded by Dan, all those in favor, carry. The second motion will be on application number B05-25 Gates, which is to provide an easement which is to be approved subject to the conditions as outlined in the decision. May I have a mover and seconder for that? David, moved by David, seconded by Earl, all those in favor, carry. So the applications have been approved. Please be advised that there is a 20-day appeal period from the date of the notice of this decision where only the applicant, the minister, or a specified person or public body that has an interest in the matter may appeal today's decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. I might at this point say that those who are associated with the applications can leave the meeting, but thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The meeting, we have no plan of subdivisions, we have no zoning applications, no unfinished business nor new business, but we do have some, at least one administrative issue we need to deal with, which is appointment of the Secretary Treasurer. Now therefore it be resolved that pursuant to section 11.3 of the Planning Act RSO 1990 CP13 as amended, Kale Henderson is hereby appointed as Secretary Treasurer of the Archipelago Area Planning Board. And Tara McPhee, Steve Stone, and Maria Pinto are authorized to carry out the duties of the Secretary Treasurer in his absence. We have also at this point received no correspondence. So it's now appropriate to call for an adjournment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Archipelago Area Planning Board meeting of November the 20th, 2025 hereby be adjourned at 1:25. Moved by Tom, seconded by David, all those in favor, carry. Thanks everybody for attending. Hey, welcome back, welcome to the finance admin section of the committee of the whole. We've had some very meaty discussions so far and I hope you're in for some even more exciting stuff. And we'll start off with the third quarter financial report from our treasurer.
Thank you Chair Ashley. I'm here today to speak to you about the third quarter financial report. Why we're doing this, demonstrating prudent fiscal accountability, responsibility and transparency. And of course, to ensure that everybody is aware of the current fiscal situation here at the archipelago. In terms of our taxation revenue as of the end of the third quarter, so that's year to date, September 30th, 2025, we have collected, sorry, not collected, we have built out 100% of budgeted taxation revenue. At this time, we've also done our property tax write-offs and we have completed our supplemental tax billings. Typically, as you can see, our supplementals and our write-offs end up netting around $40,000 per year. This is one of those items that's very difficult to budget for, therefore we do not budget for our supplementals. In terms of our grant revenue, we have received, it should say, three payments totaling 1.1 million for our OMPF. OSIF, we are receiving it on a bimonthly basis and at this time, we've received 76,000, our CCBF at 32,000, which is half of our annual grant. And our producer recycling payments, we're on track currently and we've received eight monthly payments equalling 564,000. Other provincial or federal grant funding that we receive is typically, we receive the funds post-completion or during the completion of the project as set out with the transfer payment agreements. Other revenues, one of the highlights always is building permit revenue. I do have a typo here, it should say Q3 2025. So as of Q3 2025, we have received 98% of our total budgeted revenue for the year. There was a large project for the SSA Community Center complex, which is a larger building permit. And so that is helping this, this variance this year in a positive direction. And at this time, I do think that we will end up being over our revenue projections for the year. In terms of service agreement revenue, a lot of the agreement revenue to do with WPSTN and the other municipalities that contribute to that fund as well as GBB employee contracts, those payments will be reflected in Q4. Of course, there's always seasonal and variable expenditures to consider. A lot of times, a lot of our access points, our waste is all, a lot of it happens in the peak of the season. So May, Victoria Law Weekend to the end of October. And then going forward, we start into winter operations, which can also create a lot of variability. Just a quick slide here about the external levies. These are the external levies that we do not have a lot of say in how they are structured and/or the amounts that are paid, however, we do have representatives on the boards. In terms of the general revenue, as you can see here, very high level. We've collected 95% of the budgeted revenues and we are at 78% of our expenditures spent for general operations. And digging into that a little bit more, you can see that we are planning on doing the majority of our reserve transfers in Q4. And we do have some very favorable variances tracking predominantly building permit, sorry, building department. And then moving on to items like planning revenue, we are slightly lower than we would like to see at this time due to a lower number of permits received. So we may not be achieving that target this year. We will keep council informed of that. In terms of the general user fees and external billings, we are expected to see a positive variance in terms of those. And our library grant will be received in Q4 as well. Health services does appear to be low, however, this is just due to the timing of the billings. And when we receive funds at year end, we are expected to fall in line with budget for those funds. For expenditures in the general area, as we can see, there are several departments that are showing slightly underutilized. However, some of these are utilizing consultants for different projects and those will be realized in Q4. And then planning building environment, we are seeing overall decent trends with those areas. There are some smaller variances, building, we are looking like we're going to be slightly over. And that has a lot to do with payroll costs resulting from staff turnover and transition periods during that 2025 year. The variance noted for belvedere expenditure, that reflects the release of funds that was previously held and reserved to support this facility renovation project and those funds were dispersed during Q2 of this year. The other item to note is on the revenue side, transfers appears quite high. And the reason for that is due to the Tamarack North Center. We contributed to the bridge loan in 2024, I believe it was 2024. And we've actually received our payment back from that bridge loan, so that has been fully paid back. Statement for North, the North revenues are performing as expected and a lot of this will mimic what's happening in the South as well. And in terms of the funding, the producer recycling funding, we are expected to meet our budget for year end. Trending on the, on the expense side of things, we have some slight variances that are unfavorable. Fire, very minimal in terms of the dollar value, however, that's due to the inspection of services. And And in terms of the Wharf expenditures, we do not anticipate any significant expenditures in this area following Q3, due to the seasonality of that location. Transportation expenditures, they are trending negatively in both North and South, and that's due to a lot of increased fleet and equipment maintenance and overhead costs. As well, we had a very difficult January to March snow plowing and salting season. It was quite high with some freeze thaw experiences that often do amount to some higher expenses in those areas. Very similar in the South, variances are trending well. Holiday Cove Marina revenue, we're at 85% of revenue. We're on track to hit our target, but due to the fact that that was at the end of September, we may not meet our total revenue targets. However, with that revenue, if we don't sell as much, say, fuel as projected, then we won't have the same expenses for fuel as projected, so we are expecting that to trend alright by year-end. And then, in terms of the South, this very similar variances that are being noted on the negative side. Quick definitions for your reference, and then the statement of capital expenditures. As you can see, most of these projects are on track. Some of them, we are waiting on a few items, and we are expected to complete, I believe, the majority of these projects by year-end. Some of them may fall into 2026, and we will keep council apprised of that as well. And that concludes.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Question is, where would the Henvee Wind and Let revenue manifest in this report?
Okay, so that would be in our reserves. So, the Henvee Wind and Let revenue we receive is $50,000 per annum, and that is indexed by inflation. And currently, we have not spent any of those funds, and so they are currently sitting in a reserve.
So, where does that manifest in this report? I don't see reserves as a...
So, that would be balance sheet item, and this is only reflective of income statement items.
Okay, and do we know how much the balance is in our reserves for, I guess, that gets applied and... I understand there are some restrictions on how we can use the Henvee Wind and Let funds, is that not correct?
Yes, there are. We'd have to look at that agreement, and I'd have to dig at that reserve to see.
Things like the Scary Boar project for the location or rink or things like that, it has to be recreational services, my very...
It has to be my recommendations benefit of the community.
Right, so we have a couple of projects, like the roof over the rink in the north, the Scary Boar presentation we had this morning. Those would be things that that fund could serve us.
Yes, but we also have some other things that we're thinking about.
Thank you.
Anything else to add? Any other questions? After looking at where we are year-to-date, let's move on and have our first look at where we're going to go for next year in our budget.
This is absolutely no criticism of any councillor or the Finance Committee or yourself as Chair, but I know that this council, when we reviewed Strong Mayor Powers, was opposed and thought it was superfluous for our needs. I know that legislatively, we have to do some things, and we can't get out of them, and that our REVE has given direction as he's required to do. But I think it's important for us, or at least I feel it is important, I won't speak for council, to at least on a point of personal privilege, say that this, that I'm assuming that our position remains the same, that we are opposed to strong mayors, that we are doing what's required, but our intention is to do nothing more than what's required by council or by the REVE or whomever. I think it needs to be said, because there are parts of that legislation that I find abhorrent regarding labour management relations, for example, and I don't like creating precedents. So, I understand and I appreciate the comment that's in this preliminary budget that's required. I think that the REVE has done, found the very measured words that are necessary, but I want to be on record as saying that we continue to be opposed to the legislation.
Thank you, and let me, that John, just explain briefly why we thought we had to put something on the agenda now, as opposed to leaving it? Because we just left ourselves too exposed.
Yeah, and it is our interpretation of strong mayors that until that the REVE is not able to delegate that particular authority, which is the creation of a budget. Because of that, the only other option would be to let the time run out in February 1st, and we thought that that wasn't prudent, so we thought the best suggestion would be to have the REVE offer what he believes as a direction forward, or give us our marching orders in starting and creating the initial budget. So, we don't believe it's not delegatable, so it can't be delegated to us, so we believe that the direction that we're suggesting moving in is the right direction.
And we did obviously have a meeting to discuss this, and the REVE reiterated his position on strong mayor powers. I think we're all in alignment, we just have to follow the rules. Waiting for a side discussion. Okay, the suggestion here is, we do have a declaration that's going to come forward, so we'll read it to you now.
Okay, this is May, oh, it's mayoral direction, not REVE direction?
Strong mayors.
Oh, okay, so this is the Director of Finance Administration Treasurer for the Chief Administration Officer and the Clerk. Pursuant to section 284.16 of the Municipal Act 2001, and section 7 of the Ontario Regulation 530/22, the mayor is required, see, they didn't even get it right either, I'm a REVE, not a mayor, is required to prepare and present a proposed budget for the township on or before February 1st of each year. In accordance with section 284.3 and 284.16 of the Municipal Act 2001, I, Bert Livers, REVE, hereby issue the following direction to the Director of Finance Administration, Treasurer and the Chief Administration Officer, to prepare a draft 2026 operating and capital budget in accordance with the process for previous budget cycles, and that conforms with best practices utilized by township staff in previous years. And two, to endeavor to maintain an overall increase in the draft 2026 operating and capital budget within the rate of inflation, excluding provincially mandated levy adjustments. This mayoral direction is effective immediately and shall remain in effect until revoked in writing, dated that the Township of the Archipelago is 20th day of November 2025. Bert Livers, REVE.
Okay, let's move on to the budget.
Thank you, Chair Ashley. Moving forward with our preliminary budget discussion, some budget guidelines, which are probably quite familiar at this time, to maintain comparable levels of service to those provided in the current year 2025, to incorporate municipal tax increases to address some of the inflationary pressures, new initiatives, and levy adjustments, to advance projects and opportunities consistent with our strategic plan, to continue to support our core services and our non-core services, allocate funds to reserve for future capital investment, identify cost-saving measures without competence in service quality, prioritize purchasing Canadian products where practical, maintain sound investment strategies and reserve management practices, and pursue capital grant and external funding opportunities. Balanced budget approach is still remaining the approach that we're looking at this year, and it includes maintaining our tax policies, managing our residents' interests and expectations, prioritizing the departmental requests that come forward, and maintaining and replacing capital assets. Rehearing to our short and long-term financial plans at the same time, and managing the increase in costs. All of these items pertain to a balanced budget, and that's our current approach going forward. Of course, we just had the discussion in the mayoral direction that was read into the minutes, and we are moving forward with that direction from the REVE to endeavor to maintain the overall budget increase within the rate of inflation, excluding provincially mandated levy adjustments. After the February 1st deadline, this budget does fall back and go to a council budget. Our current timeline is as follows. December, January, prepare departmental budgets, incorporate council feedback from the budget planning meetings and the senior leadership team meetings. There will be a capital project discussion that will come forward in January for council to review, and then, February to March, the Finance Committee meetings will be held with the departments, as well as the REVE and the review of the draft budget. April will be council discussion and approval. Of course, in future years, I am hoping that we can obtain a more timely budget. However, with our current accounting system, this does make it increasingly difficult. Some of the budget considerations and the economic outlook going forward. Our capital budget will remain very similar to years past, and what you've seen, we'll have a detailed synopsis prepared for each project, and how these projects are going to, what specific criteria are used for bringing these projects forward. Currently, interest rates and the Bank Canada interest rate is currently at 2.5%, with an overnight rate at 2.25%. What this means for us is, any investments that mature, or any investments that we are, new investments that we're looking at purchasing, we will be looking at purchasing them at a lower rate of investing. And then, if we were looking to finance any long-term debt, we would be looking at lower rates in that debt. In terms of inflation, it was 2.4% in September 2025, October cooled slightly, I believe it was 2.2%, that was just released this week. Some of those core inflationary factors, such as food and shelter, remain quite high, and that's what's offsetting it, because gasoline has actually declined and eased. What's happening with that CPI again, I believe it went down to 2.2. Our calculated average that we're coming up with is around 2%. In terms of what's going to happen going forward, well, that is the uncertainty of our existing economy right now. What will happen to GDP? However, we may see gradual increases, but I think it could remain slightly stagnant in terms of growth. Some of these inflationary pressures, and how are we trying to mitigate some of those? One way we are doing that is by looking at our existing contracts. So, any contracts that are forward-facing that will carry us into 2026, and they're currently being negotiated, we are looking at negotiating on those contracts now, using current existing dollars, in case that inflationary pressures continue, if they rise. And then, in terms of revenue management, we are looking at our tariff and fee schedule to bring that forward to council for review, as it is, needs to be updated. And of course, aligning our property taxes and taxes, and trying to diversify our revenues when it comes to investing. Control and cost control and efficiencies, so we are looking at any joint procurement opportunities, of course, buying Canadian when we can, for many reasons, to support the local economy, to support the Canadian economy, but to also avoid tariffs. And of course, we don't want to be involved in currency fluctuations or any types of contracts that require high-dollar value items that are in USD. In terms of risk management and flexibility, well, we're trying to hedge as best we can against some of these volatile costs. One of those efforts would be when we're purchasing new vehicles, in terms of light fleet, we're looking at vehicles that are electrified, so that can help hedge against some of those increasing costs. Some of the budget considerations that we're already aware of for this year are our municipal insurance programs. So, our corporate insurance program, we're looking at a 3% increase, that's more to do with increasing of fleet and equipment, rather than what's happening in the marketplace in the insurance. We are looking at a small increase as well on the municipal health insurance side. It is not significant. When we moved providers, we were locked in at a lot of our rates for two to three years, so we're still within that timeframe. We likely will, when we go out to market after that lock-in period is over, that is likely when we will see an increase. The cost of fuel and construction goods, a lot of the analysis and research that I've done indicates to plan for a 6% increase due to market fluctuations. So, we will be looking at that. Planning and development, so costs associated with the official plan review and any relevant studies would fall into the 2026 operating budget. Certain consultant fees may fall off in the 2026 budget, but they may simply be replaced with new projects associated with the official plan review. The communication strategy continues to be implemented, and there are some functions with the communication and branding that will fall into the 2026 budget. External levy increases, so I have been apprised to a couple of new ones that I heard about this week as well. So, OPP, we know is going to head towards 11%. We have not received our final billing update from them yet. We were apprised that EMS is looking at 6.5% and potentially around 4% to 5% for our DCEB. So, that is currently what I'm building into the budget. If I look at the averages over the last five to 10 years, it's closer to around a 2.5% increase. In terms of technology and innovation area, so the department is still implementing the IT audit recommendations from the Perry Group audit, and the ongoing modernization costs, as well as ERP operational costs. So, of course, when you're implementing a new ERP, you're going to have at least a year where you have two sets of operational costs on two sets of products, so that we are budgeting for already. Of course, we have the blue box transition, which was alluded to in more detail earlier today. So, we are looking at decrease in revenue, followed by a slight decrease, likely a lesser decrease in expenses. And of course, asset management, we are continuing to maintain our buildings, and so that requires the repairs and maintenance to do so. As you're aware, there was no news from the Ontario government in regards to property tax reassessment, so we are still utilizing 2016 valuation figures. And at this time, there's also no news in regards to the property tax overhaul of the system itself. So, at this time, we have no new assessment base apart from any new growth due to new builds or people doing renovations. So, the projections for 2026 from MPAC are showing a 0.47% increase in current assessment value from the existing 2025 return roll, so minimal. And then, how that works with our tax rate projections, so of course, because it's 2016 valuation date of the assessed value of a property, single-family detached home not on water is valued at 219,000. Single-family waterfront detached is valued at 600,000. And you can see what a 1% increase in the North and South would do to your average tax bill. 1% increase in North would equate to a $10 increase on the tax bill, and a $9 increase in the South, if you're on water, it would equate to $28 in the North and $25 in the South, and so on and so forth up to 5%. These tax rate projections, so we can see, if we do nothing, we would, no increase, we would be at 9.3 million, and then, going forward, 1% increase, we'd get 9.4 and up to 5%. So, we discussed taxation in quite a bit of detail. OMPF, OMPF is confirmed, we are receiving a slight increase from the province there. That will help offset some of those external levy pressures that we are going to see increasing this year. OSIF, we know that OSIF is going down, that is confirmed. That's due to the valuation they use for our capital assets. Previously, they didn't consider your capital assets and the renewal rate for those assets. They changed their valuation for this grant three years ago, don't quote me on that, close to three years ago, and since then, we have seen a considerable decrease each year. In terms of CCBF, so federally previously known as the Federal Gas Tax, we are going to receive the same amount as previous years, and that is confirmed. Recycling funding, we've discussed that already in detail. The North's funding will cease to exist in 2026, so we have previously used that on a variety of different projects, Scary Boar Road being one of them, and more recently, we used it on North Shore Road. And then, of course, we have our Henvee Inlet Funds, which remain at $50,000 plus an annual inflationary index. Just to note as well, for the Henvee Inlet Funds, we haven't utilized those ones since that has began. We currently have one open request for reconsideration with MPAC. It is not a high-dollar request for reconsideration, however, we can expect to see RFRs every year, even though they're still using a 2016 However, we can expect to see RFRs every year, even though they're still using a 2016 valuation date. In terms of PILs, payments in lieu from the government, none of these figures and projections include those. Those will be discussed in more detail at April's budget meeting. So we can look at our core service levy trends. Which trends seem to continually go up, which ones are quite, you know, pretty even. So that's kind of how on the next slide, you can see the 10 year and the five year average and how I'm coming to some of those estimates. So again, we have received new information and I'll continue to keep council apprised of any of the other levies that that do get set in the coming weeks and or months. And then very quickly, just how the current levies are calculated and what their formulas are to do so.
I have two questions for you. The first is, are there any questions or comments on the presentation on the budget?
Am I correct in my understanding that the core service levy would not be considered the provincially mandated levies? Because I say in my statement up above that endeavor to maintain the overall budget increase with a rate of inflation excluding provincially mandated levy adjustments. So those levy adjustments for those things that we might just identify, would they be provincially mandated?
Yes, they would be.
Okay, so those are out of our control. Okay, the other thing I'd like to state as well is it's come to our attention and we're aware of this project on the western shore Georgian Bay is, and I know our guideline says that advanced projects and opportunities consistent with a strategic plan. But I think given our strategic plan is about protecting and preserving our environment, that we need to add an additional line that are under our guideline is that we should address environmental threats. So that whether it be fragmites or pollution or whatever, that it is a high enough priority that it needs to be, you know, more clearly, in my opinion, needs to be more clearly stated in our guidelines. Because if our water supply becomes contaminated, the impact on our residents is going to be incredible. So we need to be aware of and be prepared to address any threats that happen to our water supply. Thank you.
Yeah, we can we put some wording for that.
Yes, we can, but you're not, are you insinuating you would like a reserve in the current budget? Because that would be more like preparing for an emergency situation.
I think you're going to have a presentation coming tomorrow, making a request. And I want us to be prepared that when that request comes in, that we had treated as an environmental threat response.
Yeah, so we we will just put wording in the guidelines that we need to be aware of, we can work on that. Scott.
Thank you. Are we going to talk about, we're going to talk about core service levy moving forward or can I make a comment on that? Okay, great. Well, first thing, on planning and development. Planning development has a huge challenge for 2026, not only in budget, but just the effort of official plan review. But we also, I believe we had, if I direct this to Mr. Henderson, land use studies were something we had in the planning. And then the notion of having for 2027, in 2020, by the end of 2026, a planning framework that kind of examines the sustainability and survivability of the point of barrel settlement area. So I just wonder if that's included for for 2026.
Yeah, thank you. So what we've done thus far is in that line, costs associated with official plan review and relevant studies. The relevant studies is the catchall. The official plan is the primary guiding document and policy document that would be needed to to address those. So I think in general, yes, but we've we have definitely summarized it in one line. I haven't broken it down in pieces yet.
I knew you were tracking well ahead of me, Mr. Henderson. That would be great, thank you. Then supplementary through the chair on the levies. I had a quick discussion with CFO Robinson and a note regarding the EMS. Looks like our pressures of our external levies are going to be of concern over the next few years. For the for the, and it is the notion that Ontario is the only province that where the provincial government doesn't directly pay for things like OPP, healthcare, social services. And I go on. I was at the wonderful GIS celebration, I I bet the year of a couple of CEOs to find out, CAO is how they were handling the levy increases. And one of our neighboring municipalities is putting the OPP increase directly as part of a I a tax increase before their residents. Not saying that correctly, but because I was, it's an interesting idea that they're identifying exactly that these increases are going to get passed directly to property owners. I have a problem because I think property owners fund through their their municipal taxes far too much as a kind of a speech. And but it's a way of identifying potentially to our residents that it's not us that's increasing your municipal tax. Yeah, so just an idea, and I wanted to offer that perspective to CFO Robinson and our Chair of Finance and Vice Chair.
In our meeting yesterday, we discussed that we are going to have to spend some time looking at how we deliver the message and how about the outside costs going up and how it relates. We have in the past broken out the OPP, probably won't go that way, but we're going to have to figure out some way to make sure that the message is clear. Where the increase in your total tax bill goes. Yes.
And just to add on that too, I think that's where the communications piece, when we send out our final tax bill will be really important. Just to outline what is controllable by the municipality and then what is controlled by the province. And we we can't do anything about those ones. So I think the communications around that will be key and we'll likely try and utilize the services of our communications provider for that.
When it comes to budgetary implications of the official plan review, there is not a deadline that it has to be completed in 2026. Is there? That's question number one.
The short answer is no, there's no hard deadline to complete something. There's deadlines to start things. We are past those deadlines, to be completely honest with you. We are still trying to finish the zoning bylaw. So you shouldn't start the official plan until the zoning bylaws time. So but no, in terms of it, in those deadlines, it's not unique for to, those are soft deadlines, I guess, is the short answer.
Supplemental then, given that with the introduction, I think it's Bill 60, where the government is wanting to override the the very OPs that they have to approve from every municipality. Going slow on the OP review may be wise advice and spending more time on our land use studies in terms of priorities. Maybe both financially prudent and operationally prudent. I say that without being a an expert on that, but it seems to be a truism. Might I be correct in that?
My last question, my last question, we're running behind for our start of our two o'clock meeting. But this is your opportunity, if you have a project that you think should be considered in the budget, you need to get it to us now and I am welcome throwing the floor or we will accept them in writing in the next half hour.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know that. That was going to be another question is when is there going to be an opportunity for input into the budget? I would like to recommend that the budget include funding for signs, identifying the township of the archipelago at appropriate locations, north and south, so that I know where I'm at. And the fact that, I don't know if Mr. Zanusi is here or not, but he is, but we can cut his mic off. But the last time I drove to Woods Bay, I didn't know that I was in the township of the archipelago until a business sign on the road indicated that we were in the township of the archipelago and that's not right. And my car didn't veer off the road as a result. So I think we can go with signs now. And if the south doesn't want it, then the north does. Mr. Zanuzzi.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can.
Please say, oh, thank goodness. I think that was Consular Manners who brought up the 30 year old question. I would wonder, Earl, if we could, oh, well, now we get I get shortened here because our Chair of Finance said we've got 30 minutes. Oh, Earl, why do you do this with 30 minutes left?
I didn't set the clock. I was responding to a statement by the Chair, blame the Chair.
All right, we have a to join us, so I will take this conversation offline. If we wish to have a meeting privately or in a group next month, we will have it.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna. That's what I was gonna say, we can take this offline. Your requests can come too.
Okay, we're gonna have. We're gonna have to come out of finance and admin because we have consultants ready at a two o'clock meeting and it's costing us money for them to be there. So we will come back into finance and admin after we're finished.
Okay, council, we're in planning and building and the first order of business on the agenda is a report from Rebecca Elprick and Marilyn Cameron from JL Richardson Associates regarding the zoning bylaw review update. Carry on.
Just waiting for Marilyn to join the meeting and share her screen, there she is.
Just Rebecca, it's Kale. Welcome Rebecca and Marilyn, just a little sound check Rebecca, if you could, because I I don't know if you're just speaking quietly, but we couldn't hear you there.
If you don't mind, I'll check mine as well, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear, Marilyn.
How's this now?
That's great, thanks Rebecca.
Thank you. So good afternoon, members of council, township staff and any members of public in attendance. We're grateful to have been invited here to share a status update on the zoning bylaw review penning direction from the last council meeting that we attended. Next slide, please. So we'll go over where we're at in the project, what we've completed to date and what's left to come. Some of the feedback that we heard both from members of council and members of the public since the open house and the last council meeting. And we'll go through some of the key changes that we've made to the zoning bylaw following what we've heard and then go through some next steps and leave plenty of time at the end of the meeting for some discussion and and question and answer from those in attendance. Next slide, please. So as you know, we've we've completed the first three phases of the project so far. So that included kicking off the project and developing a common understanding of the goals, timelines and expectations for completing the project. We've undertaken some background research, understanding the history of the project to date, the public feedback that was received when the zoning bylaw review first was initiated back in 2019. And as well, some best practices or case studies to reflect all in recommendations to council for directions for the updated zoning bylaw. From there, we did prepare an updated draft of the zoning bylaw reflecting the recommendations from our background research and feedback that we compiled from various stakeholders, both township staff, council and members of the public. Right now, we're in phase four. We have presented the updated draft of the zoning bylaw to the public through an open house that was held back in August in Perry Sound. And we've incorporated and gathered that feedback into an updated version for council's consideration. Since the last meeting, as I mentioned before, we have made some tweaks based on the conversation and discussion that we heard last time around. And so we're looking forward to presenting that back to you and and getting your feedback on next steps. Next slide, please. So just a quick summary of what we've heard so far. With regard to shoreline structures and accessory structures, and we've heard from council and members of the public that folks are interested in in a bit of a different regulatory approach to avoid the visual clutter of shoreline structures along waterfront lots in particular. And looking for some creative ways to to solve or tackle that problem. And we'll get into what we've come to the drawing board with to address that. With respect to decks and docks, some of the changes that we made, there was feedback that they they complicated matters or the provisions were a little bit hard to understand. And folks are calling for additional flexibility in the regulations that were proposed. Setbacks was another area that caused a lot of discussion. There was both support and pushback on both sides for those increased front yard setbacks on waterfront lots that are prescribed by the official plan. So I think we've settled at a common ground that that makes everyone happy. With respect to floating accommodations, the same kind of thing, we we saw both support and pushback for the regulatory approach to to floating accommodations within the township. You know, this is a hot button issue that other municipalities in the area are also addressing at the same time. And in particular, some of the public feedback requested to permit houseboats in particular. So to take out any references to marine vessels from from the provisions in the bylaw. With respect to backyard hens, there was general support for those new permissions and requests to expand that to other small scale livestock. So whether that be ducks in addition to hens or other similar kind of backyard livestock. With deer wintering habitat, we saw some concern for the additional study requirements that are introduced on privately owned lands where development is to occur within deer wintering habitat. And we also heard some feedback from the public with some additional lands that could be considered under that deer wintering habitat and as well for the environmental protection zone. The last couple bits of feedback we heard from from council and from the public was that the updated bylaw needed to be flexible and easy to implement. I heard a lot of KISS, keep it simple. And so we're looking to implement clear and straightforward approaches, which consider a wide range of lot conditions that really vary based on topography, lot size, whether it's on an island, a peninsula, an inland lake or in town, needing to be able to address a wide range of those different scenarios in a flexible manner. As well, sort of beyond the scope of the zoning bylaw review, but wanting to raise it for the record and and so that council is aware. I know we've mentioned this before, but there is some support for additional regulation for dark sky protection and short term rental accommodation. And that could be within separate bylaws to address those two matters beyond the zoning bylaw. Next slide, please.
Great, so based on that list that Rebecca just went over, the next few slides will respond to those discussion points with a list of the changes that have been made in the zoning bylaw in your agenda package. So the first was shoreline clutter. So we heard the need for regulation to reduce the visual impacts of that shoreline clutter, specifically from accessory buildings. And then also about the need to accommodate a wide range of waterfront properties, particularly related to size. And in our most recent discussion with council, that primarily came up related to lot coverage. So to address this, the revised zoning bylaw proposes an amendment to the maximum number of accessory structures permitted on residential lots based on the size of the lot. So the categories you can see in the table there correspond to the categories permitting lot coverage maximums within each of the residential zones. And the impact of this will mean that for the very smallest lots, permitted accessory structures will be reduced to from three in the existing zoning bylaw. But for the largest, they will have the widest increase in the flexibility of structures. And then this provision does not apply to decks, docks, pump houses and other structures that relate to the shoreline or are smaller than required for a building permit. So one thing to note though, is that this revision would also propose applying this maximum number of structures to sleeping cabins, wherein the existing zoning bylaw, they would not. maximum number of structures to sleeping cabins, wherein the existing zoning bylaw, they would not. It's important to note though that sleeping cabins are also regulated under Section 5.39 and the existing provision, sorry, that establish a maximum number of sleeping cabins by ward are not proposed to change. They have been maintained. Oops, there's one more there for shoreline clutter. So, the second measure to address that, those issues in the version that you have with you today is a proposed increase in the front yard setback on all residential lots that would apply to accessory buildings or structures. So, in Ward fifteen, this would be an increase from the existing seven point five to fifteen meters as with primary buildings on waterfront lots. This would be consistent. In all other words, this increase would be to ten meters where the primary building setback would not change from the seven point five meters across all residential zones. So, what this would do is have the effect of locating new accessory buildings and structures further back than the main building from that front lot line, which will have a visual impact in reducing the appearance of that clutter from the road or waterway. And this provision as well would not apply to accessory structures that are functionally related to the waterfront. So, docks, decks, boat houses, those would be excluded. And in the existing zoning bylaw, there is a following provision to that that permits one sauna, one pump house, one marine storage facility and three marine railway in the front yard as well. And these only minor changes have been made here, reducing the three marine railways to two. So, these have generally stayed the same. Then decks and docks. As mentioned, we heard the need for flexibility in the proposed changes to deck provisions particularly. So, in this version, a previously proposed provision which limited the height of decks and included decks over a certain height in the lot coverage calculation, that provision has been removed. You won't see that one anymore in the version before you. Other remaining provisions that regulate height where the deck encroaches into a required yard have been maintained. These are from the existing zoning bylaw. And then other proposed changes presented previously related to provisions for maximum area of attached decks not to exceed the building floor area or for detached decks to be located setback from the shoreline. And then clarification of what an attached deck is have been maintained from the previous presentation and version you've seen. And then no revisions were made to the provisions proposed for docks. So, these have been retained from the previous version of the draft zoning bylaw. And then, as mentioned, in the previous discussion we had, the direction was given to maintain the course for the increased setback only in Ward five for waterfront lots. So, as a result, the zoning bylaw before you maintains the existing seven point five meter setback on waterfront lots in all other zones. And that's for primary buildings and structures. The proposed increased setback to fifteen meters for primary buildings and structures on waterfront lots in Ward five has been maintained. And then, just a note that the, this applies only to primary buildings and structures. And so, the enhanced front yard setback for accessory buildings and structures would be as mentioned previously.
For floating accommodations, what we heard was both support and some pushback for the proposed regulations for floating accommodations. Lots of people were glad to see some new provisions prohibiting floating accommodations, seeing these as a major issue in the township while others saw the need to scope houseboats out of the regulatory approach. So, we've made a simple amendment to the provisions that were included in the zoning bylaw to remove any reference to marine vessels in those provisions for floating accommodations. So, the provisions would apply only to in-water boat houses, barges or floating buildings or structures that are used as a dwelling in any zone. And it wouldn't, so in effect would restrict floating communities at a marina, for example. But if somebody were to use a houseboat and be using that for navigation in addition as a residential use, the prohibition wouldn't apply. Next slide please. In terms of backyard hens, we saw a lot of support for those new permissions to keep backyard hens on residential properties, noting that those permissions would only be extended to non waterfront residential properties. So, those with a general residential zone on them. And there were some ideas to expand the scope of the livestock permitted in backyards to include maybe ducks or geese as well as hens. What we're proposing right now is to permit only hens within non waterfront residential dots as an initial pilot for implementation. And from that, Township Staff can see how that goes after a certain period of time. Note any successes or challenges that arise from implementation and the framework that's put in place to regulate backyard hens. And from there, expand those permissions in the near future to include the keeping of ducks or geese on non waterfront residential lots in a future amendment that would be brought forward for Council's consideration. This way, you'll have some information on how widely this provision is uptake, what the uptake is like rather. Any unintended consequences that arise from permitting backyard hens. If there's any complaints that are being driven out of these new provisions and then make a more informed decision on whether you want to increase that scope to include other small scale backyard livestock. Next slide please. For the deer wintering habitat and the EP zone, what we heard was both an interest in including some additional lands in the deer wintering habitat overlay and EP zone as well as some concern over the additional requirements for an environmental impact study on privately owned land within the deer wintering habitat overlay. So, really what these provisions do and for the deer wintering habitat overlay in particular is provide a mechanism to implement the direction of the official plan and of the provincial planning statement which requires that no development or site alteration occur on significant wildlife habitat unless it's been demonstrated that there would be no negative impact to the feature or its ecological functions. And so, by including this overlay, it provides an actionable mechanism for Township Staff to implement that direction of the OP and of the PPS. So, we propose to maintain those provisions which would require an EIS where large scale development or redevelopment is proposed. But I'll note that we do have an exemption in there for small additions where redevelopment of no more than 10% of the ground floor area of an existing building or structure is proposed within a deer wintering habitat so that you're really only capturing scenarios where there's likely to be more of a disruption to that habitat. We're also proposing to maintain the proposed extent of the deer wintering habitat overlay and the environmental protection zone that's based on mapping provided by the province, by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry so that the zoning bylaw remains in conformity with the official plan and the mapping that's provided there. This could be something that could be brought up at the next time the official plan is reviewed comprehensively at the next five year update. And if the mapping changes at that time, then could be reflected in the next iteration of the zoning bylaw. Next slide please. The last item that we touched upon was short term rental accommodations. And there was interest in some additional regulation that's beyond the scope of the zoning bylaw to address in a short term rental accommodation. So, no changes were made at this time to introduce any provisions to regulate short term rentals. You do see this in some communities, but more commonly, it's addressed through a standalone bylaw, like a short term rental licensing bylaw that can get into some more detail than what might be appropriate in a zoning bylaw. So, we've opted not to make any changes to the zoning bylaw at this time, but do note that this could be a project for Council to explore in the future outside of the zoning bylaw review process. Next slide please.
Sorry folks, I'm having trouble finding my mute button and muted. Thanks. So, thanks for taking the time to go through those revisions today. And Rebecca and I are happy to answer questions in just a moment. But in terms of next steps, as we continue to revise this draft, once Council is satisfied with it, we ask that you would direct us to take it to a statutory public meeting. This will require a final revised copy of the draft to be circulated with meeting notice. And that requires about three weeks, twenty days to do before the public meeting. And then at that meeting, members will be able to attend virtually as well as at council chambers to provide their input and comments on that draft zoning bylaw. Following that public meeting, JLR and Township Staff will prepare the final version of the zoning bylaw and the formal amendment to the zoning bylaw. So, which will include all of the proposed changes as have been reviewed by Council and provided feedback on by the public. At that point, Council will be presented that amendment to consider for adoption. So, those are our next steps and I want to say thanks for listening to the presentation and let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much to both of you for quite a thorough presentation. What I'm going to propose we do now to allow members of Council to ask questions is go back if we can to each of the slides where we started with, for example, I'm not sure if there might be questions before the shoreline clutter, but that, I know there are some questions that relate to that. But I'm suggesting that we perhaps go through those slides in order and hear any feedback that Council members have. So, open the floor to comments on the first slide which we looked at, which was the shoreline clutter one. David.
I'll go first on this one. We talked about making it simple and easy to understand. One of the items that does not get mentioned in there is buildings under ten square meters. My understanding is that they are accessory buildings, but they're not included in the count for accessory buildings. I think we need to spend some time to put some wording in there because this is always a contentious issue. What people can do, we know they don't have to get a building permit. We should put some wording in there so it's clear that, and we don't have people running around with false expectations.
Yeah, I think you have a good understanding of the, just to, sorry, Chair Frost to respond. I think that's a clear understanding that accessory structures, things that don't require a building permit, the only, there's an openness to allow them to occur on the property. They don't need a permit. The major way those are controlled are through lot coverage. So, we could add an additional line that restricts the maximum number of accessory structures, storage structures, sheds below that threshold of needing a building permit. And that could be added to a maximum of three. Your first comment was keep it simple. That is impossible. We struggled with that and it is never achievable to everyone's satisfaction, plain and simple. But no, but so I just wanted to address that first point. But if we can add that, should we get that direction? Is to refine the number of accessory structures knowing that that's extremely challenging to monitor, control and enforce because they don't need a permit and we don't know about them until it's too late. So, but with that being said, we could add that.
If I could just comment a little bit more, Peter, just the way you put that. I understand we've had some problems in the past that we thought would give in direction where we hadn't. So, I would like to stop, like you said, if you get direction, we could stop at this point on that point, say, do you have or do you not have direction? As opposed to whether it happens in the, you know, farther down in the meeting because we forget things.
Look to you Chair. Yeah, when staff here and individual councilors say something, that doesn't necessarily mean direction, nor if four, three, five people are nodding in agreement. We would appreciate clear direction and if we go through these one by one, if through the chair, if there's a way to do that through raising of hands so that we're sure the majority of councils in favor, I think that would help staff out considerably. So, thank you.
Thanks Kale.
C A O has a comment. That is something I would really appreciate if we could add a, we take, we hear suggestions that each one of you have. And we do find it difficult at times to be able to determine whether or not it's the consensus of the group or whether or not it's your opinion. So, I do think going forward, if we can, if there is something that you wish to add and if we can get even a show of hands raised, I'm looking at the clerk to make sure that that's okay. And then that gives us some sort of direction. So, we would appreciate that. Great, thank you.
I do so direct staff on the basis of the feeling of the Council, excuse me, on this particular issue. Do you want to have a further Dave or?
Do we have confirmation? They are agreeable. I just want to make sure that if, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're clear about what we're asking for and then raise.
Alright, so I'm going to piggyback on Dave's paragraph 5.1.2.ii.c states, "Further to be above, the maximum does not include a privy and marine storage facility, docks, decks, a pump house or buildings less than ten meters squared in ground floor area, provided that such buildings are not used in combination with any other accessory buildings or use." Now, I see under the bylaws, if I look at the bylaws here for like boat houses, it clearly states you're only allowed to have one boat house. That's fine. But Dave's point about not having coverage, my question was, are there any limits on these structures? When I look at the index here in the zoning bylaw, I think Kale, you referenced lot coverage. I don't see any paragraph in here that says lot coverage. So, I think that if it was the easiest saying maximum lot coverage or lot coverage and something that is clearly articulated somewhere in this index, so it's easy to find, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's Council's direction, but I mean, right now, I'm with Dave. I'm like going, right now, when I read this, there are no limits on the number of structures if they don't fit into an accessory building.
Yeah, thank you, our Reblevins. Just to clarify, there's no limit on the number of those small accessory structures, but they are counted towards lot coverage. So, if councils of the desire to limit the number of wood sheds clearly, regardless of whether you're at maximum permitted lot coverage or not, that's the direction we would be seeking that I think is to resolve and address the points that's being raised. And we would add that to the bylaw. Where and how it's added, I think is to be determined, but once, because there's a lot of moving parts here. So, right now, I just want to be clear. I'm looking for whether the agreement of Council is to say we would like more controls in the number of accessory structures. Those are ten square meters or less, 100 square feet or less. Right now, we're saying you can have as many as you have until you run into a lot coverage room, provided they're 10 meters back. That's currently what's being considered in the bylaw. So, if you're saying, well, we would like a maximum of three accessory structures on any property, four or five, whatever that number is, and we could add that to the bylaw. So, and we'll figure out how to do it and all the moving parts.
Okay, back to you Peter. So, just to clarify, I'm okay to use lot coverage as the maximum control mechanism.
So, we have that today.
But I'm not, it's not clear to me where in this document where I could find maximum lot coverage.
Yeah, so the definition of lot coverage includes any roofed or covered accessory structure. So, it's there. Trust me on this one, it's there. And that's the only thing we have currently. If you're saying we would like to restrict the number of them.
No, I'm just saying is, when I read through this document and I'm trying to find what is the maximum lot coverage, I don't know where to look.
Definitions.
It's under definitions.
Just to clarify, within the definition of lot coverage, it includes every building and accessory structure that are covered by a roof. So, that's how it currently is dealt with.
But it doesn't specify what it is for those areas, does it?
Through you Mr. Chair, if I may add, the maximum allowable lot coverage varies by zone. So, it wouldn't be in the zone specific provisions that follow the general provisions that apply to accessory uses. It would be there that it would establish the maximum permitted lot coverage. It would be there that that it would establish the the maximum permitted lot coverage.
Okay.
Can can I butt in here?
That's one where it's not in, it's not in general, it's under specific zones. That's the confusion we talked about before. Anyway, thank you.
Hey, Scott, and then, well, I'm going to point out, if I could through the chair, aid the chair by saying it's Counselors Zanusi's hand's been up for a while, so we'll go to him and I've been, Councilman Manners has been in the ejection seat for a bit, for a moment. I just want to comment, I think this acknowledges the direction on that specific point from council that if we're going to limit the through lot coverage, that a property owner would have the flexibility to choose what mix of buildings and the allocation of square footage to that. So to answer Mr. Henderson's sort of direction is, I think you took our direction and this fits without having minimum, maximums per building. It's flexible. Thank you.
So I'm going to go to go to Rick next, but very quickly. I think that was the point we made quite clearly the last time. And so we're just confirming what we, I think, agreed to in our council meeting last time. So, Rick.
Thank you. I'm confused, so bear with me and I have another startling question. So folks, are we proposing that any structure, a woodshed, marine storage unit, an MSU is the most abused thing we have. But regardless, are we proposing that total lot coverage of these roofed buildings that are less than 100 square feet are only regulated by lot coverage? Or because if we are kids, you know how many hundred square foot places you can put on a place on an island? It would blow your mind, guys. There's tons of room for these things. I think we'd be better off, folks, if possible, recognizing what most, I think all of you have said that there needs to be flexibility, whether a repair wants three woodsheds, one MSU, two two privies, blah, blah, blah. Give them, I propose, we give them a total number and let them choose whether they're all MSUs, whether they're woodsheds or any other unregulated roof structures. And I have a second question, but I don't want to lose the emphasis of this one. So can Peter, is it okay if I hear back to see if there's any buy-in to that thought?
Sorry, we have a couple of people who want to comment on that. Earl.
Well, I think we're trying to to figure out how many angels are dancing on the end of a pin here. We, our current bylaw says that total lot coverage is governed by the number of buildings with roofs on them, to be simplistic about it. That's currently in place and the the proposal is no change. The original concern was how do we regulate that? Well, we're regulating it by lot coverage. So there is a limit to it after you build a cottage, you build a sleeping cabin, you build an accessory building all greater than 10 square meters to the number that you can have. And I think that's the most flexible way to deal with it. So I'm not in favor of trying to put a number on it because then you're going to have to then cross-reference it to the size of a of a property, to the different, different wards. And I I think that the easiest, if we're trying to use gifts to some extent, is just to say that it's governed by total lot coverage. And that applies to all wards in the same way. So that's my spiel on that. Mr. Zanuss.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Earl. Do you have a further comment, Rick?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I I don't know, Earl, determining the number, I think you're cleverly, because I'm envious of your abilities, trying to maintain what we have by saying it's impossible or difficult to monitor. What I'm saying, Earl, are two things. First of all, if we only go by lot coverage, take 10 minutes or 15, look at your own property, look at 10 others, see what the total square footage is permitted for the lot. Take away the sleeping cabins, take away the main, and just figure out how many hundred square foot structures you can build. It's enormous. That's my, that's really what I'm trying to get to. There is tons of flexibility to build an incredible amount of 10 square meter, 100 square foot. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Bert.
Yeah, I think, thanks, Kale, for pointing out and for pointing out the where the maximum zoning is. I think it would help clarify on that paragraph 5.1.2.ii.c. Maybe you amend it to say further to the above, blah, 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 any other building accessory bills are used. Not greater than the maximum lot coverage or something to that effect, so that they would know to reference the maximum lot coverage. Does that seem like a reasonable? Not too complex?
I think that would be an addition that could be done and wouldn't change the current interpretation. I'm still not clear whether the guidance of council is to, I see different opinions on whether we need to better restrict the number of small structures on a property. But if we want to stay with the status quo, adding that would be reasonable.
The 10 million are really our accessory buildings and remind them that they're included in the lot coverage. So, okay, I'll go back for Rick. That's the section I was looking at too, because it mentions the 10 meter squared buildings. But it says that they're not counted, but they are counted somewhere else. We have to make sure people don't read in not counted mean it's never counted. So we can add just a few little words there, reminding that they are counted for the total lot coverage. I think you get around it. Because people don't go back and look at the definitions when they read that paragraph.
Yeah, we could add that there in maintaining status quo. I think if that's the agreement, we can, those are some tweaking. I don't see that as a major change, but I want to, not to jump ahead, but if that's the direction, I think we've lost sight of the major change that's being presented to you today up on the board. So maybe we'll wait back to that. Okay, we'll come back to that.
But Dave, just sorry, Peter, through you, Dave, that that does the 10 meter square that Rick's concerned about, that doesn't address, this paragraph does not address that. So that they, that gives the owner the flexibility, the only constraint is matching lot coverage. Okay.
Okay, I think.
Peter, can I ask, can I ask just another question, a clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Kale, earlier on, I I don't think I heard you right, but did you say that the building code requirements could be applied to a 10 meter square building?
I think I know where you're going, Rick. There's changes to the building code. Our zoning about when you need a permit, increase the threshold from 10 square meters to 15 square meters. In our zoning by law, we've maintained the 10 square meters as this magic number.
Fantastic. That's wonderful. And folks, just maybe to explain, if you build one of these woodsheds or a marine storage unit or Grandma Joan's sun space with a roof, you are not, you are, you are not required to build it up to the Ontario Building Code standard. And I can assure you, in a non-hittable building, I shouldn't have brought in Aunt Jemima's sunroom, in a non-hittable building, you don't necessarily at all need Ontario Building Code requirements, because kids, the costs of building an Ontario Building Code approved building to store firewood in or your life jackets is absolutely enormous. You have to get into legal foundations, which in itself will, you know, prevent most people from getting a permit. So, thank you, Kale. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rick. Are there any other comments on this section of the? Okay, I'm going to go with Earl and then David.
Well, I'm going to start on the setback. It was my understanding that the last meeting that the council direction was except for Ward five to maintain a seven and a half meter setback. The recommendation to go to 10 meters for non-water use buildings to deal with shoreline clutter is a bit of a misnomer because all of the complaints about shoreline clutter deal with water-based structures like saunas in particular. So there's not a lot of push to extend the setback for other structures I didn't hear to 10 meters. All I heard was if there was a way to get rid of saunas and other types of smaller buildings or limit them, that that was the goal and we can't do that given some of the conversations I've heard because they're all smaller than 10 meters square. So I'm opposed to the recommendation to extend other structures setback to 10 meters. This would mostly apply in the water access communities, not pointed barrel particularly. So that's wards two, three and four. All of those wards have different island sizes. Some wards have a preponderance of small islands. Another ward has a preponderance of larger islands. When it comes to smaller islands or mixed, like our ward is in Ward three, I don't know, the goal has always been to protect the trees. And on a smaller island, there's no guarantee that you're going to protect the trees by moving back to 10 meters and then having a structure go further back in terms of its building. So I don't think we need it. I think it's more complicated and that I would urge council to to recommend that we get rid of the the 10 meter reference in the bylaws and just maintain it at seven and a half meters for wards one, two, three, four and six and 15 meters for Ward five. Look for support.
Thanks. That happens to be my feeling too, and I'm not quite sure how other council members feel, but I think most of us are back to the seven and a half meter, which was been there for, yeah, okay. So that's pretty clear direction on that one.
Thank you. Just for the, for Rebecca and Marilyn's, we got a consensus on that.
Thank you for confirming.
Quickly.
Sorry, I should have used my mic. Strangely, we have consensus. Yeah. David, is that the last comment on this section?
No, that's my other point, but my other point was you now put sleeping cabins in with accessory buildings. In my mind, I I like them separate because people get confused once you start about talk about both in the same paragraph and they can start doing things to make accessory buildings in a sleeping cabin. So I don't want, I would like to understand the logic of including them in that, in accessory buildings or not just saying that they're included in the you know, lot coverage and everything else.
Yeah, I want to take some time and if I guess Marilyn or whoever has sharing control to go back to slide five or slide. Oh, no, that's it. Yeah, sorry, my apologies. What we heard from council, and I don't think it was, we heard that there's maybe too many buildings on properties. That's it. That's a problem we heard. I'm not talking about sheds. Right now I'm talking about buildings, so sleeping cabins, garages, accessory art studios, they come in all shapes and forms. And we heard that there's, at the same time, we heard also that we wanted more flexibility or continued flexibility within lock cover. So we sort of tried to struggle with these two concepts, seeing how do we manage the number of buildings while at the same time providing continued flexibility to how people want to develop their property within lock coverage. So what we did is we developed a scale based on lock coverage to say, okay, within your maximum permitted lock coverage, or sorry, within the size of your property. So if you look at this list, if I draw your attention to the start of that scale, it's properties that are less than 0.44 of an acre, so less than half an acre. I don't have the numbers that had me, we crunched the numbers to how many of those are out there. There's a handful. Most of the properties in the archipelago are roughly three acres. That's like the average across waterfront, even on inland lakes. There isn't as a drastic difference on inland lakes as I thought there would be compared to Georgian Bay. Kind of average out to three. Yes, Georgian Bay has more big ones, but they sort of average out the same. So if you look at a small lot, lot that's half an acre or less, lot coverage is very restrictive to begin with. But we're saying, okay, on that size of property, we don't want to see more than two accessory buildings. But at the same time, you choose how you want to build them. So if you want two sleepy cabins, go ahead. If you want two garages, I use the word garage, but water access property, two, an art studio and a and a study, like people, their needs are different depending on where they are. Then you go ahead and build those as you see fit as determined. Lot coverage is still going to dictate you and and on a small half acre island, half acre lot, whatever it is, once you build your house, you're running out of room to build much more anyway, because your lock coverage is so tight. So it's reasonable, it's not really changing much, other than recognizing and stopping someone who chooses to build a small house because they don't want to chew up or eat up their lock coverage. Historically, they would have had the right to build on on Georgian Bay six accessory buildings. That could have been three sleeping cabins and three other accessory buildings. And on that small half acre lot, theoretically, you would have been allowed to have seven buildings. Practically, could you have with with lock coverage? Probably not. But if you chose to build a bunch of small things, you might have been able to. So what we're trying to do is do a common sense approach to say, keeping it simple, while at the same time providing flexibility and recognizing the size of your lot will dictate the total number of accessory buildings you're allowed to have. But we're not messing with our traditional, on Georgian Bay, you're allowed three sleeping cabins and on inland lakes, you're allowed two. That's still out there, but if if you can't get to your three, like on the small lot, you're not going to get three sleeping cabins, even if you're out on Georgian Bay. So we're trying to blend them together. I think, again, going back to the original, if to to not put them together, you're going to ask us, we would have to create two different scales. Say, I want a one acre lot, you're allowed one sleeping cabin and and then there'd be a scale for that. So we blend them to try to keep it simple and keep flexibility, while at the same time recognizing that smaller lot should have less amount of total buildings on their property. So that's our goal. Happy to try to answer questions and see if this is the right route.
Thanks, Kale. I think that's a pretty good explanation of where those numbers came from. Scott. Earl.
I thought we did have direction through the chair that there, there was a view at council that perhaps less building was better, but cite a very large cottage on that island property for as an example. Then there were others that stated they want it, the flexibility should be, you want to have a very small entertaining space as your main cottage and you wanted three sleeping cabins, then you should be able to have have that by by flex. That was the flexibility we tried to to describe. Just to confirm that, because I believe that was the chair's summation of it. If that, if that serves through law coverage, then I am comfortable. But and it is the total square footage that we we'd be concerned as long as those differing philosophies can be accommodated. Thank you.
Earl.
Yeah, Mr. Henderson's explanation reduces my anxiety when I first saw this because I was of the opinion that we were looking at flexibility regarding. I was of the opinion that we were looking at flexibility regarding the size of a sleeping cabin, given modern trends to go beyond five forty to something a little bit bigger that allowed uh for families to to uh uh sleep and and exist during, you know, uh on a porch or whatever. Uh but continue to only have the one kitchen and and whatever else. Are you saying with this by restricting the number and it's governed by lot coverage, that as long as the accessory buildings are smaller than the uh principal residence building, which I think is already in in the bylaw, um that they have some flexibility on the size of that sleeping cabin as long as they're within the number two?
Uh no, no, I did not say that. The five forty max is still there on Georgian Bay and the five hundred and forty square feet and the four hundred square feet on inland lakes is still there. We haven't made those changes. What we've done here is simply recognized the concern we heard from the community and from council about the number of buildings in the lot and the proliferation of buildings, be it on the shoreline or throughout the property. So we're trying to get at that issue. But at the same time, not changing the number of sleeping cabins or the size of sleeping cabins permitted on a property.
Yeah, yeah, I think that if you read, it's on page fifty eight of the zoning bylaw, this is for commercial residential ones. Uh the maximum lot coverage, like Kale said, these numbers line up exactly with the shoreline cluttered numbers that are under a paragraph five point one point two. Um so as far as the lot, the lot coverage is really gonna be the guardrails to keep the proliferation of structures uh under control. Um it's on page fifty eight, Scott. Um so I think that that gives the residents the flexibility, like Kale just said, to build the main cottage and their accessory structures as they wish, as long as they fit within the within the maximum lock coverage, along with all the other accessory buildings, pump houses, boat houses, et cetera, on a lot. So I think it's, I think, my opinion, I think this answers the mail. Thanks, Kale.
Rick, and then you.
Yep.
Rick.
Um thank you. Uh your re- ship, what did you just say? It answers the mail? I I didn't quite hear.
Yeah, uh if you go to page fifty eight, Rick.
No, 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 I'm, listen, sorry, hold on, hold on, Bert, sorry. I'm I'm happy he is a pig in poop. I just didn't hear how how you, what your last expression was. Does it fit the nail? In any case, guys, that's okay. In any case, guys, this, what Kale and company have done and the big company included, um that gives me what I was trying to, I should have picked up on this, you know, a long time ago. I'm tickled, delighted, happiness. Uh have a great afternoon. I'll shut up now. Earl and I are gonna be silent from now on.
Thank you, Rick. Um Earl.
I got a problem with being the style police. I've got a problem with being the style police and whether uh number of buildings is uh ugly or not ugly, which is essentially the the uh philosophy behind this proposal. And I quite frankly, uh don't think that that should be the philosophy behind a bylaw. Uh and uh I would rather us have dealt with the size of a building uh within the confines of the lot coverage and provide some flexibility that way rather than number of buildings. Uh because uh certain islands uh are conducive to uh a large main cottage, some are conducive and people want a and like an entertainment uh a main cottage with uh with any number of sleeping, like, well, the three sleeping cabins right now. But uh uh with some flexibility on the side. So I'm, I mean, it's the will of council, but uh I uh I think we're being the style police and uh um you know, I I've had a resident in Ward three uh call it Smurf Village whenever there's more than two or three uh buildings on it, uh yet he has two or three buildings on on his property. So I I I I I'm opposed to this, but I'll go with the will of uh of uh the council.
Thank you, Earl. Um. Uh John.
I just, I just wanna be, I just wanna make sure we're clear. Do we have? I didn't see any direction at this point. Did you, Kale?
No, I haven't.
So I just want to, lots, there you go. So that I just want to make sure that before we move on, if if your proposal, I do think that it should be vetted through council just as to.
Well, I think council agreed that it would just add those additional words that to that paragraph that says uh combination with any other accessory buildings or use uh limited by the zone maximum lot coverage, something to that effect. Is that?
The old number, the number.
The old one. I'm not talking about the number of buildings. I'm talking about paragraph five point one point two point I I dot C. That's further to the B. The maximum number does not include privy marine stores, decks, docks and pumps. Yeah, that's the agreement. That's the only, that's the only direction Kale's received.
Please. Decorum.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose then that we eliminate uh uh the the proposed revision here regarding a maximum number of buildings based on size and replace it with uh uh a yet to be determined uh bylaw that allows for limited flexibility on the size of sleeping cabins only. That would still have to be drafted. You could turn me down or not, but I'm opposed to that proposal and I thought it was being put forward by the reef and maybe it's easier to put that forward if it's got the support of council and I can vote against it and feel good.
Uh thank you, Earl. Um are there any other points that want to be raised at this stage? I'm I I mean, we're become very circular here and to say the least. And I thought myself that when we originally directed or I thought directed this whole process was aimed at to use a very simple example, if you had a a an island that allowed for thirty five hundred square feet of buildings on it, that uh there would be some discretion as to how that owner would use that thirty five hundred square feet of building uh possibility. And I, the idea of larger than five hundred and forty square feet uh sleeping cabins bothers me, but if some people feel that that's the way things should go, I I suppose I could live with it. Uh we on our island, for example, uh might be in 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 one of these arguments with where we've got a Smurf view because it's worth Smurf, Smurf Village, because we have a fairly small main cabin and three sleeping cabins and a couple of other accessory buildings. We're on a six acre island. And that's the way it's been for a hundred years. So you know, I, it sort of bothers me sometimes when those kinds of uh definitions show up for the way somebody had decided to deal with their cottage property over a very long period of time. So I thought what we had said the last time around was that some basic, like I said before, I was thinking that if we had an island with thirty five hundred total square foot coverage available to it, that the flexibility to the owner to determine exactly how that thirty five hundred square feet would be done would be the way we were headed. Now, maybe I made a huge mistake, but that's what I thought. That's, I thought the direction we were headed in. And that would suggest that somebody could have an accessory building of of X and a and a sleeping cabin of Y and they they wouldn't necessarily be what they are today and they could be have a seven hundred square foot sleeping cabin if it fit into this process. And the sleeping cabin was still not used as a effectively a second principal residence. Now, I could be completely off the chart on this thing, but I'm afraid that's where I thought we were headed when we dealt with this last time around. Have I completely missed the point? Or am I somewhere close? Say pardon? Rick.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh no, Peter, you're you're right on. Um and to be quite honest, Earl, if if you think I I would vehemently argue debate and even go further. Well, I'm not going to go any further. A sleeping cabin has never, will never, should be never than five hundred and forty square feet. The main reason is the minute, even at five hundred and forty, you're almost inviting another main cottage with a kitchen. Remember, kids, a sleeping cabin looks after Earl, what you want, what Peter wants, what all the rest of council wants. And that is to have a main and available places for folks who have a lot of guests or a large family. So I um thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Rick. Um. I think Scott was up next.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna uh choose my words very carefully. Let me uh repeat what the input from Pointe Barrow Islanders Association was on the size of sleeping cabins and the size of accessory buildings. Their position was nobody needed three accessory buildings of equivalent size to the main cottage. That was a concern. They put forward the reason why one would consider, I think it was six hundred and seventy square foot cottage or cabin, sleeping cabin, was allow multi-generational families like yours, Chair Frost, um to have a porch and a bump out for a toilet. And that's where the grandkids, whatever. That's simply what was put forward by them. Um I'm having deja vu of uh rest in peace, Council Walker yelling at me saying nobody needs a sleeping cabin uh larger than two hundred square feet. I grew up in the, you know, in this, and then uh to my great surprise, I found I had like a five thousand square foot cottage. Uh so I I say that with great humor, but I I just want to understand that that input is not being served by this. Uh it, to some degree, it is a square footage, but we're still having limits. Either not having a limit on an accessory building and not acknowledging an increase in, you know, size of a sleep, a sleepy cabin. I just want it for the record that that understanding, that was the input provided to us? And the wisdom of council will be from Ward three and from the wisdom of council may or may not to address those those concerns and uh requests for an additional square footage.
Thank you.
Uh Kale. If I can speak, just, I think staff would benefit and the consultants would benefit is there's we have definitely heard that individual cottage associations, cottages indicated larger individual sleeping cabins. Respectfully, I don't feel we've gotten clear direction at all from council to ever implement that change. If that's, so let's just talk about size of sleeping cabins right now. Just for reminder of everyone, on Georgian Bay, it's fifty square meters, five hundred and forty square feet. On inland lakes, it's forty square meters, which equates to just over four hundred square feet. That's the maximum size and has been that way for over twenty years. If council wants us to change that, I would ask that we get consensus for us to implement those changes in the draft bylaw. Because I've heard differing opinions, nodding in negative and positive today around the table. So we can get clear direction on whether that change is something council would want to support, that would be beneficial from a staff perspective.
Thanks, Kale. David.
I'm basically comfortable after the discussion, what we have there, except for one little thing. Is that if I build a one meter by one meter little platform, put a pump on it, you put a roof on it or I put a doghouse out the back, that gets caught in your accessory buildings. I don't think that's.
No, it doesn't. That goes back to the earlier conversation. Um pump houses are excluded, um small structures are excluded from this. So just to, just to get the attention of council and focus on this again, size of sleeping cabins, I would really appreciate that getting clear direction now before we move on number of buildings. Because I I want to separate these two just for my benefit, because I think they're kind of bleeding together. And I know they they might at the end of the day, but is there consensus that we'd want to increase the size or build better flexibility on sleeping cabins? I would just ask you that again. And Chair Frost, I'd appreciate even a a show of hands to clearly put this idea either on the table or or off the table.
I think it's important. I think we are kind of going around a bit. I do think that it would be helpful to. And then we just, and then if it's not, if it's not, support it, then we move on.
Can I rudely interject? Because like, I don't know if you see my hand. Um uh Scott, you you mentioned um the Pointe Barrow folks want larger sleeping cabins. I don't, I've never heard that and I asked Alice and Dave to um give me their thoughts that that there is any place else eat well in our ward that wants a larger than five hundred and forty square foot sleeping.
I've never heard that.
I'm sorry. Never heard.
I haven't heard any other rate pair association suggestions on size of cabins.
Um. Earl.
Let's be systematic about this. I I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Anderson. You might be surprised by that. I'm gonna propose that uh the the next, hopefully last iteration of this bylaw review includes a bylaw that allows for uh some fl- some emphasis on some flexibility regarding the size of a sleeping cabin. You can vote for or against it. And my feelings won't be hurt.
Thank you, Earl. Um I I think we're gonna have to do something about, I personally think that some flexibility on the size would be okay. But I know that there's a lot of people who don't think that, but I'd like to say, what what would be the response of of council to a proposal to modestly increase the size of sleeping cabins?
If I may, I've said nothing. I would put it on the table. We leave it as it is at five forty and call for the vote.
Okay. All right. I, no, we can, we can show of hands. Show of hands on the five hundred and forty. Keeping the, keeping it the same.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the direction we're gonna go in. Okay? Okay, so, but the direction of of council is that we go with the remaining effectively what we already have, which is the five hundred and forty square feet and the four hundred in the inland lakes. Okay?
I uh uh propose that the proposed revision to limit the number of accessory buildings by lot size be eliminated from the bylaw review.
What's the feeling on council about that?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm I'm asking the question. And so we're looking right now at what is being proposed in the uh the shoreline clutter um that we're looking at here on the, on the, on the uh on our monitors.
Do we keep paragraph five point one point two I I B? It's B. It's specifically about B.
I I think our reef is 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 adding a topic that's already been dealt with, that we've approved about what counts. I'm talking about the chart.
Look, if you've read the bylaw, paragraph five point one point two I I B specifically states that. That's what that's talking about.
Yeah, but.
All it's done is it's taken this information from this paragraph and put it up in a chart for you. That's all I've done.
That's new. And I'm opposed to it. And I'm asking council whether they agree with me or not. Just because you proposed it and they included it doesn't mean it goes without the approval of council. That's why I I put it forward. I'm opposed. That's why I, I put it forward. I'm opposed. You can vote for or against.
I understand.
Can, before he does that, can I just, cause I'm now confused what, what Kale said about pumps in those small bits. I thought they were just not allowed, they were not included in the exclusion from the shoreline, but they were also counted in. In the number of accessory buildings.
No.
No.
Okay. So not, they're not, okay.
I'm sorry, um, Earl was raised an issue and what, what do we think about it? I'm my pitch, sorry, my position is that we go with what I. See there because I agree with, with, with the REEVE that it's essentially covered in that paragraph or that subsection.
I'll defer to council matters through the chair and then I'll speak.
It's my understanding, because it says revisions to the zoning bylaw on that particular work, that these restrictions. On the number of buildings by size of lot area is new. And yes, it's been included in five point, whatever. I've got it written down as well with an X through my notes. Because I'm opposed to it. So I have put on the table or tried to that. Uh, we say no to this. So, uh, you can either change it and say, to make it easier, that we're in favor of this proposed revision. Or opposed to it. I think that's the best way to approach it. How many are in favor of this limitation, which is new, which is included in five point, whatever? And or not, and let me vote against it. And anyone else that wants to join me.
Okay, Scott.
I, so I can make an informed decision, uh, if I could add, uh, ask, uh, Director Henderson. So, uh, so I understand the, uh, maximum size of five hundred and forty square feet for a cabin. Under the current, uh, zoning bylaws, I understand I could have three accessory buildings, depending on the size of my property. The same size as my principal residence or principal building, main cottage building on there. Is it council's direction? To Mr. Henderson, that one could have, you had a thousand square foot cottage, you'd be allowed. Three one thousand square foot accessory buildings on island if there was lot coverage. Is that accurate or? That was raised by Pabby, by the way.
Sorry, yeah, them. Um, not to confuse things, just to be clear though, we have already got in. Under the old bylaw and current bylaw, there was not a max, the only maximum size in accessory building could be not a sleeping cabin, other buildings. Was no greater than your main. We have already addressed that. And in the current draft that was presented to the community in open house, there's now an upset limit of no bigger than your main or one hundred and. Sixty-five square meters, whichever is the lesser. So we've brought in a, a, a cap. Smaller than your main possibly, if you have a, a main. So I think we've already addressed that. That's already, that hasn't been voted on, but it's in the bylaw and continues down the path.
Yeah, I just wanted that clarification so I can, we can make an informed. Decision on this. Thank you.
And just to be clear, what's new here is. The number of buildings is trying, is going to be dictated by the size of your lot. Proportional, we try to come up with a proportional idea here. The bigger your lot, the more number of buildings up to the current limit is six. That's everywhere now. So if you get to four acres, you're allowed that max. But if you're less than that, then we start to tick away at the number of buildings, nothing to do with lot coverage. Lot coverage is always there, isn't changing. The size of those is already dictated, sleeping cabins has a rule. Other accessory building has a rule that is now changed, proposed to be changed. So, um, yeah, so this is brand new. This hasn't, this is something trying to achieve what we thought we heard as a, as staff, as staff and the consultant says. I don't want to use the word smurf village or number of buildings, proliferation of buildings on properties. We're trying to say, okay, that's a problem on small properties. How would we deal with that? Well, we will do with that in this mechanism. So that's for consideration. We will. Uh, no concern with us if it's not hitting the mark or if it's status quo, we're fine with that. We just want that clear direction from council.
I just wanted to restate that community concern from Ward three that very large accessory buildings, meaning the size of the main cottage. Um, have been used in a way that Counsel Zanusi identified that they quickly can become habitable. Buildings due to the size of. And use for other uses than what you would think of having a workshop or some form of, uh, use of that accessory building. Thank you.
I'm not even sure where we are. I want to. I, that's where we are. And so, uh. How many, we can't have a, we can have a show of hands, a vote, we can i- indicate what our preferences are and. Beg your pardon? Leave in. The section that's. Now showing on our screen or not? And the idea is, do we leave that in or do we take it out? Do we leave it in? Do we take it out? Direction is still to.
Do you vote for a keep it in or taking it out? Do, Rick, did you vote to keep that paragraph in or take it out?
Keep the paragraph in, please.
Me too. I like that, um, proposed change.
Yep. Okay. Leaving it in.
Just to, to guide the conversation, I think if we've addressed this slide, I would ask Marilyn to, to switch to the next slide. And I feel like we've already addressed this. We got, I, just to remind everyone, direction. To maintain seven point five for everything done, uh, and keep fifteen. And I think that's all that says, um, great. So I think we can move forward.
Just before we do move forward, Kale. And there was some discussion on whether or not we should be counting the, um, number of sleeping cabins equally with the number of. Accessory buildings generally. And I'm, I'm not sure we got, um, discussion sort of resolved in that sense.
Yes, the direction is that accessory buildings along with sleeping cottages are included into that paragraph B, with the exception of paragraph C that you've identified. Those other buildings or the other structures that don't fit into that. So accessory buildings include. Sleeping cottages.
Thank you.
Thanks Rebecca.
Thanks. Okay. Questions relating to, um, I think, did we deal with the. Floating accommodations? I don't believe there's anything that needs to be done there. Sorry? Okay, decks and docks. So any questions about it? What's being proposed?
Thank you.
I think that. Direction is there.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, setbacks were dealt with floating accommodations. Any questions regarding that? I think it's very well, uh, set out and it deals with the one issue that we were faced with, which was what to do with real legitimate, um. Boat, uh.
Yeah, with that one.
Houseboats, real houseboats.
And marine vessels.
Not the ones that were dragged to someplace and moored. So I think that's covered. Oh, Scott?
Yep. I, I think that's covered, but I, I, I've heard some of the community. Discussion on it. I want to be very clear. What we aren't allowing for are for, uh, floating vessels, marine vessels. That pin the vessel to a piece of crown land. And, uh, moor it. Using the land. That came up at the open house. And I, I know my community doesn't support that.
Correct.
So anchoring, yep, all that stuff. Sure. We, that would be an exception. Actually physically pinning. This marine vessel to the shore. For the permitted. Permitted time is not part of it. You, you're not disfiguring. The Canadian shield. I just want to be on the record and clear for my community on that. Thank you.
Yeah. And if I could, to, to provide some comment with respect to that and appreciate the concerns of the community. Um, the, the limits of the zoning bylaw are with respect to private land. Uh, and it doesn't have the ability to govern both crown land or. Marine transportation in its full form, marine vessels. So we're trying to avoid the confusion by making these changes. Um, so the zoning bylaw alone isn't the tool to, um, completely address those concerns, but I appreciate them and we'll continue to, to discuss them.
Thank you. Any other comments on that section? Backyard hens. Earl.
Is there a public health issue related to ducks or geese that is different from hens?
Uh, I'd look to the consultants to add, but I would, to simplify and say, well, we're not making those changes today. So I, I can't, can't answer that and don't have to answer that today. Because we're not proposing that. We're saying keep it with just chickens. Uh, don't go to geese.
My question is, what's the rationale for excluding the two? Is it a public health issue? Or is there any other rationale?
The, the simple rationale is the common use is chickens. Uh, we are venturing into new ground. Let's start at the beginning of that path and see if it continues or. See if we have to walk it back if there are issues, right? So at this stage, I think it's, let's e- entry this to the common usage that we see out there and have open. Uh, openness to future changes if and when needed.
There's going to be some.
Oh, I think, uh, Counsel Zanusi is addressing us.
Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to add a little humor, um. Regardless of whether there's ducks or geese, the fox are going to have a heyday in the township of the, the Erica Pella goes, as soon as this is enacted.
Do chickens swim? Is that the rationale behind, uh, non waterfront residential?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, the, the concern was for water quality, um, in permitting backyard hens on a waterfront residential lot.
Okay. Anything else on chickens? I don't think so. Okay. Um, the deer wintering habitat and the. Is that covered, I think, with what's being proposed here? As far as we know. Kale?
Yeah, that's, so we had some concern or comments about expanding and or changing it. Um, we, uh, this is indicating that we're going to keep inconsistent to our maps in our official plan. There is future projects going on right now that might lead to changes to the official plan map, which then would spill over to the zoning bylaw. But it'd be done in a, in a comprehensive and defendable way. Um, where we have some backing on why those, why your property might now be zoned ES or not. So. Uh, we can't just make those changes with local knowledge on its own. We need a little bit more backing, uh, and do that more comprehensively. So that's, that's part of it. But I'm open to Rebecca or Marilyn to add if I'm missing anything.
Thank you, Kale. And finally. Short-term rentals of which we really, at this point, don't have any. Control over, um, although I think we have to recognize that they are potential problem for us as they are in most other jurisdictions. Uh, Earl.
Is it appropriate at this time to refer short-term rentals and dark sky? Um, review, uh, to either. The finance committee or to our CAO for consideration in twenty twenty-six. Uh, I don't know what the work schedules are going to be like, so I don't, I'm hesitant to. Direct. I am just saying, can we refer it to the CAO?
CAO.
I am putting it in my notebook, so. We will see.
My, my only comment on that, Earl, and I suspect all of us would agree that it's a, an issue we need to keep our, our eye on and see what other jurisdictions are doing. We, we have an issue with it, but it's certainly not as bad as, as, as it has become in other jurisdictions, but clearly something that we should be keeping our eye on. Um, anyway, if that is it. Uh, I really want to thank Rebecca and Carolyn for hanging in with. Our attempts to herd cats here. But, uh.
Uh, and Kale too, thank you.
And Kale, yeah, we, we do appreciate the efforts of all of you to, uh, kind of try to keep us on track, but, uh, it was, uh, I think. In the end, it's been a pretty interesting session and I hope, uh, we can move forward from this, uh, as is, uh, being projected by the. Next steps that you've already gone through. And I think we, we're, we're, we're ready to, uh, to move forward on, on those, uh. Next steps. So thanks again very much for, for coming and making your presentation. Thanks everybody for hanging in and.
It's our pleasure and, uh, I think we've got some good direction on, uh, where you'd like to see changes. My only question is. Um, uh, are we then receiving that, that formal direction to proceed with the statutory meeting and issuing circulation? Uh, and notice to members of the public?
Yeah. And just to be clear for both committee and for Rebecca and Marilyn's benefit, we will draft a resolution to that effect. For consideration formally tomorrow by council to ensure we're on the same page. So that's, that's what we'll do, uh, this evening.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Take care.
We've got.
Thank you.
We need an update on the, uh, unfortunately the O L T notice of hearing that we got from the Valentine application. Kale, can you?
Yeah, just, I'll be brief. It's, uh, just for your benefit, it's scheduled for, uh, February tenth and eleventh, a two-day hearing. Um, it's open to the public. Notice has been or is being circulated to, um, those parties, uh, required. And that's the responsibility of the, uh, applicants and their agents. So that's probably already been done by the time it's, uh, gotten to us. Um, so yeah, just for your information. Thank you.
Thanks, Kale. Scott.
Yeah. If I cut through the chair, uh, are the public allowed to view in or only the participants? Yeah. So public isn't.
Yeah. So public can attend a hearing. They just won't have party status, which is they can't speak.
That's probably a good thing. Yeah. Thank you.
Finally, uh, building permit, uh, um. The statistics for the, the month and, uh, I didn't personally see anything that was. Out of the ordinary here. Um, are there any questions, Bert?
Yeah, I had my, my one question is one, I had one point six million for four sleeping cabins. Do we have any visibility into, is it like equally split among the four or is there one that was more expensive than the others? I just thought that for four sleeping cabin cabins, I don't know, Rick, you might have a better number for square footage on that one, but one point six million seemed a bit high for four sleeping cabin cabins to me.
Uh, there's two that are slightly larger than of the four. So, um, or are larger that are making up that difference, but, um. That's what, uh, the, uh.
Where do we find values there?
Value associated with them.
Yep. Thousand dollars a square foot.
Well, wait a minute. Where do you find values on this report? Sorry, I don't know.
Are you talking to us, Rick?
Counsel Zanusi had a through the chair.
Yeah, sorry.
A point to make.
Through the chair. Thank you. Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Scott. Wh- where do I find the value on this? Uh, are you looking at the permit comparison summary?
Yes. If you look at the building report, October twenty twenty-five, sleeping cabins, there's one in there for twenty twenty-five, it says, uh, one point six million. For the sleeping cow, for the sleeping, for sleeping cabins.
Page two.
But, and, uh, Scott, your question then, yeah, thank you. Page two. I didn't, I didn't get. But and uh Scott, your question then, yeah, thank you, page two, I didn't I didn't get to page two, I don't think I've got to page two and. You know, as long as I've been here, um. A thousand bucks a square foot, kids. If you hire someone to do it, it's gonna be at least a thousand. There are some in my world that charge two thousand.
I've heard six hundred square, six hundred bucks a square foot at the. This is a thousand? Or something? I I don't know, I I I can't explain those numbers. Kale, do you have any idea? That that does seem like a pretty expensive sleeping cabin, but.
They they come in all values, so this is definitely on the high end, but it's not, it's not out of. It's not out of ordinary. We do see those.
I I'm. I'm astonished by what people will spend on a sleeping cabin, so uh anyway, uh we generated a fair amount of fees for that, so. We can't complain too much. That's the end of planning and building, thank goodness.
Take about a five minute break, please.
Now therefore be resolved, the committee of the whole moving to close meeting at. Three forty eight P M's pursuant to section two, three, nine, two B of the municipal act two thousand and one. S O two thousand and one, C twenty five is amended to deal with personnel matters. About identify individual including municipal or local board employees. Gonna get a move in a second, or move by Scott, sec my Tom, all of us in favor. Carried, we are now in.
Welcome back to to finance and admin. We have two other items to quickly cover, uh item four point five, the M and R. Wildfire Plan and Protection Agreement, Liam, please.
Thank you, Chair Ashley.
We did it.
Okay, I'll uh, thank you, Chair Ashley. So just a brief uh. Introduction to this project, um on September nineteenth. Council passed a resolution approving the submission of a grant application by staff to the Ministry of Natural Resources Fire Smart Community Grants Initiative. And after that resolution, we we applied. Um, the purpose of the initiative is to assist communities in the development of a community wildland fire protection plan. And to assist with company accompanying mitigate mitigation strategies. Um, just a quick note, the project was was very narrow in scope in the uh the M and R. Grant. It was not for capital resources, it was strictly to create this wildfire um. Essentially wildfire mitigation plan, it was to to go through, look at your community, look at what areas are are vulnerable to wildfires. What areas may maybe more resilient to wildfires and then to help. Develop mitigation strategies. Um, from a community standpoint, a public education standpoint on how to how to. Better address these these issues. After submitting our application and our uh project proposal, we received notification that township was successful in our in our grant application. So we were conditionally awarded fifteen thousand dollars. To support the development of a community wildfire protection plan and then the accompanying. Integration of uh the M and R fire hazard mapping into our current G I S ecosystem. So along with that, along with that grant, it comes with. The M and R's existing data and their existing forest hazard mapping, and then we can. Use that forest hazard mapping to determine which areas are vulnerable and we can integrate that mapping. Into our G I S system, so it will be accessible and. Be able to be used to help create the plan. With approval from council for the execution of the agreement, staff will begin the project activities. So that'll uh include oversight of the project implementation. Coordination with ministry staff and engagement of a qualified consultant, which was recommended um by the program guidelines within the. Within the grant. The project timeline has a hard completion deadline of February twenty twenty seven. So there's various milestones along the way that we need to complete, but it uh. The full project needs to be done by February of twenty twenty seven. Uh, just quickly on the financial implications. One of the conditions of the grant. Includes financial commitment from the receiver to cover any overages necessary to complete the project. So this will be budgeted for in twenty twenty six, but it's not estimated to substantially exceed the application funding if at all. Uh, the grant funding breakdown is approximately fifty percent upon execution of the agreement. And then uh fifty percent upon completion and final approval of the project. So to sum that all together, our uh our recommendation is that the. Um, agreement that's attached to this report, it's the M and R agreement that they they sent conditional on the funding. Uh, we recommend that council authorize the execution of this agreement, which will enable staff to begin. Project scoping and allow for us to meet our preliminary reporting deadlines for this project. And then attached is also the bylaw that would execute this agreement. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Liam. Uh, so M and R is gonna give us G I S data, um will they give it for the whole West Perry Sound District or just for the township?
Um, trying to think, we have it already, so we have uh mapping for the entire province actually, and then it breaks down. More specifically into, you can see the archipelago and then it also breaks it down into north and south archipelagos, so we will have. We have the data for all the province, but I'm not sure um. Technically how good the resolution would be. Outside of our area, I don't know, that's a more of a technical question that I don't know the answer to.
Yeah, but if they've given it enough detail for us to do north and south, and I suspect we should be able to give Carleen and. McDougall and the other ones in West Perry Sound some visibility too, and.
And.
That might just be an add on that John that we advocate uh when we uh go back for them for money that uh. This will be an additional feature that they're getting is the fire rating and then also that when you use. Or I guess you're using now when you collaborate with uh other municipalities to do the fire rating, that that's something you can refer to, right?
Yeah, and I believe this data is open source data as well. So I think uh. The the grant doesn't cover the. The actual mapping in the data, that's already, we already received that, it it's the, it covers integrating it into our system. So they would be able to access the data already, but not to the system yet.
Right, but I think that when you respond back to the province and saying, yeah, we didn't, we didn't just answer the mail, Rick. We didn't just do what we said we're gonna do, we did more than what we said we're gonna do, we made it available to our to our whole community. So I think that'd be real goodness to show that again, that we continue to support the whole community, not just ourselves.
Scott. Yeah, just a an associated uh question, uh Liam, the. Uh scary board community is raised a couple of times at our annual meetings, but the notion of using um. Uh, fire break strategy around our communities, much like they do in B C, which typically isn't used in Ontario. They actually look to forested areas surrounding a a community center. How how could you plan for a fire break? And I just wanted to to make sure I throw that out again somewhere. In the next year or you you know, when these discussions on uh how to deal on a community wide fire. What are strategies to to stop those things happening? We consider that or we research it, so just thought I'd throw it as a. Point of information for you, thank you.
You have any other comments? Or we can bring this forward tomorrow, please? Thanks, Liam. Moving right along here back to four point four, education report, Scott, like to talk about this.
Thank you, Chair Ashley, um and I'll do this in conjunction with Reeve Liverance and uh I just want to point out, somebody put a plastic. Pop bottle in the garbage. Before I start. Well, that.
Was it Pepsi bottle?
And I put a bylaw and uh we're watching uh. On a really serious note, yes. On a very serious note, um. On behalf of Reeve Liverance and council, I tend along with C A O McKinnon. Uh, the parents for Perry Sound uh organization regarding the mega school here in Perry Sound. I want to reiterate, it's. Uh, it's, it's a good thing that we participate in these these local meetings because our staff actually have. Children in the in the system and it and I I think uh as an organization. It's a positive thing to attend. I would report to you that I cannot sit through another meeting and I'm and C A O McKinnon assures that view ever again. Without uh a government acting on the pain and stress. Uh, that is going on the parents. Students and frontline educators. We had, we had anecdotes of frontline educators seeking mental health support, just stretched. To their limit, trying to compensate for lack of facilities. Uh, a coherent policy and why have they ended up with a school in its current state? Not having cafeteria. There's no guidance counselors. I mean, uh you couldn't describe. A worse run project. Then perhaps it's vying for the L R T, I think, in in Toronto, but even worse. Because of the consequences to to parent students. So out of that, uh so in that meeting, uh Mayor Dale Robinson attended. Uh, Mayor of McDermott for Seigman. Um, we had representatives from uh McKeller McDougall. Um, we had Ann Carling. Thankfully, as well as teachers and the teachers' union, high school teachers' union. So we got a lot of data uh in that meeting. Mayor McDermott suggested a letter to the minister as one of the remedies and the appeal from the parents. Who asked us, we are looking for municipal leaders to help us because our voice isn't uh being heard. Um, I'm happy to state this publicly. Uh, for the record, for our residents, but also for uh if the province is watching in. That um uh was heartily agreed that we would uh. Uh, based on the report from the minister and the investigation of. Of uh the school board, which I may add is the third investigation since two thirds, two thousand and nineteen. And we're still in this position. That we focus as a group of seven municipalities on the top three priorities. Uh, number one. Give us a timeline. And apply first rate project management resources and funding to complete this school. In its current form. Two, perform. A proper capacity review. That will eliminate eliminate the uh current school board view that we have a declining population. That ignores socioeconomic initiatives by municipalities that like ours and have innovative housing projects. But apply those resources and make this. Uh, uh, school uh project uh complete. Three, heartily support governance review of this school board. The performance issues of Director of Education and so forth. So that's, that is in a letter was sent by uh under Reeve Liverance's signature. I also uh wrote on behalf of along, wrote the letter along uh with uh Mayor McDernitt's leadership. But I wrote a uh uh which is in your package here, a briefing for all mayors who didn't have. Uh, the honor of attending that meeting uh and seeing how how difficult it uh the situation it is. Um, so subsequently, the minister has now agreed to meet, I believe it's on December eighteenth by virtually. Sorry, ninth, uh virtually, um, I think there are uh. Pro- province provincial positions, we need to address that I would anticipate in the call, I'm gonna brief Reeve Liverance on it. Um, to anticipate this. We have. And when we look at the numbers. Uh, what we contribute as West Perry Sound District. And in fact, what we contribute. As a whole district, Perry Sound District, which much of it is in the northeast closer to North Bay. Uh, but just West Perry Sound, we contribute eight hundred and thirty two dollars per resident. Towards education on the. Our our township, uh along with the six others in West Perry Sound, contribute an average of eight hundred and thirty two dollars per resident. North Bay is uh is a two hundred and change per resident. Their schools have. Compared to our state of the art facilities with two thirds occupancy. Our school, mega schools being built. With six portables in mind to house the the current number of students. So we're urging the minister that there is a disregard, inequity. Uh, Perry Sound District versus the North Bay District that has existed. Since the amalgamation of that and the council managers can speak eloquently on the the history of that. Uh, from the Harris government. So what we're urging, uh the province and our M P P. Is that um. They didn't create this problem, but no successive. Uh provincial government has solved this problem since that time. And this is a moment in time where we can solve this. Make sure that our district gets to do its uh it it deserves. That there is a funding and a representation on the board that should be fixed. Immediately. Not wait, this is the third investigation of this. There's been documentation since two thousand and eleven on the creation of the school. And some of the inequities in our fund and the funding model. So I was gonna say, this this is a significant moment in time. And uh I I wanted you all to be aware. Uh, that we're doing our part, we don't have the file from. Two thousand and three and two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen, the other mayors have, but we have a significant voice and we contributed. Uh, we contributed to that strategy and how we need to deal with all with the province on this note, so happy to answer questions. Plot what, how we move forward and go from there, thank you.
Rick.
Uh, thank you.
Chair D S A P attended the meeting as well, thankfully.
Please.
Uh, thank you, I did, um, and. Uh, Scott prepared with John's help thi- this backgrounder that he just talked about, um, is. I don't, is it in the same form? Uh, that forum, forum rather? Um. Mary Anne and John that that Scott provided, or has this been changed, this what I'm looking at, this background stuff? I think it's been changed, it would be worth, if it hasn't been changed, if it has been changed, it'd be worth sharing with, you should read it. It's really quite remarkable. Um, we. Scott. Should might have thought. This 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 committee was ultimately called together by a group of three, mostly McDougall folk, I think. Who were professionally trying to. Um, gather political allies. And Scott then tried. And I I hope and I think will be successful for the seven west side municipalities. To get together. And create what I might call the second collaborative, similar to the G I S thing that Joe did twenty years ago. That is successful and kept going. If we get together as seven municipalities. We will get far more respect when. As Scott says. We we are successfully able, should be successfully able. To retain reinstate the West Perry Sound Board of Education. Which ran until the Harris days and then you know the difference that that this happened. Or the difference as to what happened, we're paying, as Scott said, eight hundred. Uh, uh dollars a student and the North Bay folks are paying too. The inequity is unbelievable. He he didn't tell you and he knows the. Uh, status of the North Bay area schools as far as uh population percentages. Uh, versus the hundred and forty percent here in in the Perry Sound District with this absurd. Uh, J K to grade twelve high school. So I think, folks, the second thing that's most important is we um support Scott in his efforts. To. Bring the seven west side guys, folks together. And get an audience with the Minister Calandra.
Yeah, um. Counselor Zanusi, the we do have the meeting with uh Calandra with all the mayors on December ninth, which is a. Which is uh virtual meeting, which is a tremendous success. I would caution. Given the fact that Bill thirty three passed and that the government has much. More grandiose intentions regarding the governance of future school boards. To not get mired in, uh, disentangling the near north district school board at this time. As laudable a goal that might be, I think. The bet, the, the, the focus should be on the three areas that, uh, that Scott and the other group identified, which is, uh. What's the timeline for completion and get a, uh, you know, a proper, uh, uh. Pl- uh, schedule for that with, with, with a competent person or a group. Uh, running the show because the school board hasn't done that, you know, to, uh, and, and, and keep on those three things. No harm in keeping, uh, uh, de-amalgamation. On, you know, on the back burner, but I think with Calandra. You want to stay away from governance because I suspect that he has much different intentions. And maybe wishes to use near north as his catalyst. For things that are beyond our control. So let's stick to what parents and students in the community needs, which are the, the three basic items that, uh. Uh, that have been mentioned, uh, just a suggestion and, you know, knowing a little bit of the background.
Yeah, you know, and that's, you know, to, to Rick's point and to, to Scott's point, this is where, and that's why I brought it up at the G I S meeting the other day. And James King was there, James is Graydon's, uh, you know, assistant. And just another example where when we collaborate in the West Perry Sound districts or municipalities. That we can get a lot done, be it a, you know, Chamarack North Leisure Center, uh, be it the G I S and now the school board. Uh, so I think that, you know, Grayden, you know, won this, uh, this region by the skin of his chinny chin chin. And, and he needs to be careful because that is not a given. This, this region is a target for other political parties. And so if, if, if they, if Minister Calandra and Grayden are not successful, and they're welcome, I mean, this is no surprise to them, I'm su- I'm sure. That they're not successful in supporting this, this community, that they do run the risk at the next election. But working together makes a difference.
It, and a kind of a final comment, um, because obviously I'm new. Uh, we're all new to, we haven't been involved, involved, that involved with the, uh, the, uh, the school board. Uh, we talked about it before, we've invited that school board, whether it be the Director of Education, whether it be trustees or so forth. Staff took three months of, uh, Clerk Martin's time she can't get back, trying to make that happen in the first term. You see the consequence of, uh, provincial oversight of three investigations since two thousand and nineteen. I think we can clearly say as a group of mayors and councillors and councils. That we support, uh, effective. Good governance in, uh, boards. We support elected officials acting on the interests of local communities. What we don't support is amalgamation, huge governance models that dilute. The interests of, uh, local communities. And in fact, that's what's happened here and continues, whether it be Chair. Zanusi's challenges with D SAB, Perry Sound District, there's an inequity there. Uh, in all levels, the Perry Sound District does not get its due, telling you, you know, reasonably new, new to this. And the numbers don't lie in terms of what we contribute per resident. To all these, these functions that underpin successful communities. So I think that's the message to say that. You can fool around with gu- governance models, but the mayors and their councils are here. In the most practical form of government to deliver results for their community. And those parents, if you look them in the eyes, you look at those teachers in the eyes. You look at the student, we haven't had a chance to see the students because they, they were obviously weren't at the meetings. Um, I don't know how, uh, one could not act. On those appeals. Thank you.
The one question I got, and it may be down the road, but as far as de-amalgamation and everything else, do you foresee? Going down the road that we're going to lose this near north and get it back into where it was before? Would that be a suitable solution?
Well, through the chair, uh, if I could answer that. My personal view is politically, I don't think that's ever gonna happen. I, you know, um, even though this government inherited a Harris model of amalgamation, I ju- I just don't think so. But, but that doesn't mean we can't say that representation has to be changed relative, not only to population, but contribution per resident. I, I think, I think we can demand that. My personal view, uh, not to get too technical with it because, uh, councillor manners has counseled me to be careful. The history of our province, um, but, uh, more local representation, including perhaps. There's municipal rep- representation on those, on the, in this particular board. As a high bred model to ensure Perry Sound District gets its due. I don't know, but the governance model. Uh, to make an amalgamated school board part of a much bigger provincial governance model. And hiring three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, superintendents. That may, may or may not have the background to do that. Which is what the province is currently, uh, suggesting and implementing in other school boards. Uh, we need that money for the front lines. You know, with, I, that, my personal view, don't speak for council, don't speak, but, uh, I don't even speak for my writing on this. But, uh, having read, taken good counsel, having read everything I could get my hands on. Uh, I just don't think de-amalgamation is where we should focus on. It's proper representation that since the nineties hasn't, uh, occurred, uh, for us since we had our own school board.
There's a subtle difference between advocating for de-amalgamation and being opposed to amalgamation. Being opposed to amalgamation leaves the problem in someone else's hands about what to do with it until they ask you for advice. Uh, and so I take, uh, the comment by councillor Sheard that it's okay to say that. We've been, there's been a long history of opposition to this particular amalgamation. But don't get into the, the debate about, uh, what comes next, but I still think. Stick to the three key areas that parents and students are concerned about, which has to do with the, the school. The operation of the school and governance generally. Okay, moving on now, uh, local improvement charge policy.
That's me, me again. Somebody pick up that phone? Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Uh, last month I came to council with a policy of policies. So I figured it would only be appropriate to come to council with a policy, a new policy. So, uh, using the new framework. So, uh, what you have before you today is, uh, policy around local improvements. By way of background, uh, council, uh, directed staff to provide a report, which we did. Yeah, for the third quarter of two thousand and twenty-five, uh, that report was. Um, was done September eighteenth on the, uh. Capicog Lake Roads, including Crane Lake, winter maintenance. In, in doing our research around, uh, the regulations and whatnot associated with it. Uh, I did discover that a number of municipalities across the province had policies around how to process local improvements. And I do know that we went through a, uh, a process similar to that with the scary, scary road. Um, uh, rebuild. And I thought that it was, or we thought as, as a group, that it was important. That the township of the Archipelago have its own policy so that. The resident, staff, council has a clear concise. Process, uh, dare I say framework for, uh. For a resident or the public to request a local improvement. So what you see in the attachment is a, uh, local improvement policy, spent a lot of time, looked at a lot of. Policies that existed primarily in, um, medium to larger size municipalities, but I do think that what it does show. And what it does provide is amount of rigor that I do think is important for us to have. So. I, I do want to go and I'll be as concise as possible because it is getting late. Um, to go through the process and I do want to make it abundantly clear. That what this policy is for is it's agnostic of anything that we've talked about. We've had conversations about winter maintenance on, uh. On various roads and whatnot. This is a policy that is and can be used for any request that may come from. The public for a local improvement. So it gives them the, uh, the, the rules, the reg- the, the regulations. Understand the forms, how it will be processed by us. So I'm just going to go through very quickly. Uh, the, how the process will work. So, uh, in the policy, step one will be. That the, uh, a request for local improvement will be submitted using the request form and the policy. So we. Created a request form that any in the public may wish to, to have a local improvement can use and submit to the township. Uh, the second, uh, step would be, we as staff would do a preliminary review of the, uh, of the local improvement request. Um, after that, uh, step three would be depending on the type of local improvement. Uh, there may be a request for a pre-petition outreach. So that would be to get a sense. Of whether or not in general, the public was interested in this particular local improvement. Because I don't think it's worth, uh, investing the time and effort into, uh, for staff time and council's time. If the public truly isn't interested. So if there's one and two folks that are, are coming and saying, we want to do this, but you know, generally the, uh, the area is not looking for it. Uh, we want to make that as an optional requirement. So once all of that, uh, once the staff has done a preliminary review. Uh, council will be given details of the staff review, including all capital and operating costs. Along with other items like, uh, properties affected, et cetera. At that point. At that point, we will go to council and council will determine whether or not we move forward to the formal petition. So if you're following the process, they make the request. We as staff will look at the request, provide estimates as to the capital costs and operating costs. What properties are going to be affected? How much it's going to cost per property? We will go to council with those numbers. Council will give. At this point, uh, the first thumbs up or thumbs down. So that's the way it will work. After that, if it is approved by council, a formal petition will be circulated. So the formal petition is effectively almost, it's not a legal document, but it's getting close to it because at the end of this process. If it does get approved, a lien does go on the property. So it does need to be, uh, formally, uh. Agreed to, and it is done by the clerk. So if there is a sufficient, uh, step six would be. Uh, if the petition is sufficient, which would be two thirds majority, and I think fifty percent of the assessment. Uh, council, uh, can pass a motion. Uh, our cat, sorry, can pass a notice of intention to pass a motion. That's a. There is an objection period, so there is an opportunity within it, and this is all through, uh, regulation, uh, five eighty-six oh six. That there is a, an ability for a resident to object to the local improvement. So an individual can't object, and there is a process for it, which is described in there. And then following the, following the objection period, it is then goes back to council for passing of the bylaw. So the bylaw then stipulates the terms of the actual, the costs and how they're attributed and all of that. And then finally, what happens is the local improvement charge is registered and added to the tax roll. So that is it in a nutshell. Um, I want to be clear, it's not specific to any one project. It is a general, um, policy that can be used by any resident if they wish and choose to have a local approval within their property. Open the floor.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I think it's very necessary and I like the structure of the policy brought forward. I took at face value that you said draft and I humbly have three suggestions for your consideration. Under the review, the initial review process, uh, there's three bullets. I think there should be a fourth one that talks about, uh, the, uh, the request and how it, it is consistent or. Uh, how, uh, the O P and bylaws are affected by it. Uh. I think that that always should be a factor in this. If they're asking for a local improvement that it goes. Against everything we're doing and all, you know, out of the blue, they want to, you know, dredge, uh, uh, some property that, uh, has environment. Has environmental, uh, issues, uh, you know, we might want to say that goes against our bylaws or our O P. The second one is, is that there's, uh, three different ways that a local improvement can be paid by, and we have some examples of them. One is by the affected properties, which is implied in this. But we have had an example in this township in the past of an area being charged, uh, the example being scary door road. And we have had an example where a ward was told that they had to vote on, on, uh, on something with two thirds. Uh, that related to, uh, to, uh, Sturgeon Bay. Uh, and, and so I'm wondering if you want to consider that there are three different ways you could approach payment. Um, and, uh, uh, for, for the costs of a local improvement and, and, uh. Um, I don't know if that should be part of the application process or that should just be the determination of the township. Um, and I'm wondering if in the application itself. That we're asking the applicants to look at our O P and bylaws and address, uh, whether, how their. Their, uh, their application is consistent with or enhances the township as a, you know, as a whole or, or whatever, like. They can't just be asking for something out of the blue, uh, without taking into consideration the, the strategic plan, goals and objectives of, of, of the township. So I'm, I'm not saying do that. I'm just saying those are the three things that came to mind.
And, oh, sorry. Okay. No, no, keep, keep going. And I will ask again. As with we did previously, if it is a consensus of council, then I will certainly. Make those necessarily changes.
Uh, unless, uh, unless this council decides they want to change the title of my role. I suggest on page eleven on the local improvement petition to council, that you change it from to the mayor and members of council to the Reeve. And the members of council. Thank you.
That I don't need a consensus on.
Councillor Zanusi.
Mr. Strong Reeve.
All right. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you. So folks, this goes back a long, long way. It's five o'clock. I'm not going to get into a lot of it. But. Um, John. When you, this policy, which I think is a, might be a great idea, but I, I need to clarify. So currently, folks, in the township of the Archipelago. The south pays for its roads, the north pays for their roads. I can tell you the battle that went on with poor old scary work folk. You know, when we rented the Chippewa to get the, the poor people back to mainland or threw, you know, water into mainland, it was a, it was appalling. And not supported by a lot of people, both in the north and in the south. Um, and I don't want to see this thing all blow up. So before people come at me, John, can you? Or sorry, councillor, John, we currently. Have four roads that we plow in wards five and six. All winter long. The area improvement is local. Go ahead.
I, I think it's important to clarify, but a local improvement.
Yeah, please do.
It, it is the capital effect. It isn't necessarily the now, now the operating will come in and that will be at, uh, at step. At, uh, step four, when council has given the details gleaned, they can determine at that point. Whether or not they want to proceed. We will identify the operating costs. But the regulation, the Ontario regulation, uh, five eight six slash oh six gives the ability. For a resident to request a local improvement. So that exists in, in regulation already. What, what we're doing here is we're putting a framework around that regulation. Uh, to assist the public and council at how we would process that particular request that would come in. So the, um, you know, we will, we will, as part of the process, it, it is. It is an item that does need to be addressed, which would be the. Operating costs, but that would, that would come in at the stage where. A, uh, where it goes to council when we know exactly what the request is and we can estimate what the cost of the operational line. The capital cost is 100% borne by those that benefiting from the cost.
Okay, thank you. But what I need to confirm in my, I live on an island. I'm a bush pig. So you're proposing that the ratepayers pay the capital of 1.5. But the decision for the operating costs is yet to be made, or is that automatically included? With the capital cuts?
I, I, what, what we're taught, you're talking in hypotheticals. Um, what, what you're, well, that was a, uh, that was a request of council made. Some time ago and we responded to it in, in, uh, September as to what it would cost to do those particular roads.
Yes.
This is again agnostic of any of those items. It would be a request would come in for doing ABC. It could be they want to pave the road. And they're willing to pay to get it paved. And, uh, if they have enough that are interested in wanting to get that particular road paved. And they go through this process, we can then determine whether or not we agree with it and we want to. And then the cost associated with paving the road would go on their tax bill. So anybody has that ability. Request it.
Can I ask specifically? This group, let's just stick with this situation and help me through it. This group wants their road plowed.
But, but Rick, that's not what this is about. This is about a, a more generic policy. The issue in wards five and six is, and like John said, is agnostic. It's independent of this. This is talking about a policy to handle future requests that might come in, not that specific request.
If, and, and if I, through you, Chair. Uh, if I, if I can add just if a request, so this policy gets approved. If a request comes in, the request will come in. It will be specific about what they're looking to do. They want this road. If we're talking about hypothetically, we're looking at the. Uh, turning the season. Bridge to your island. It will come in. It will, uh, we will do the analysis. We will have, uh, uh, Josh's crew do a cost estimate. As well as what the actual cost will be. To maintain that particular road in perpetuity. So it would be maintenance and repairs and replacement and everything else. That information would then, after the request comes in, we would do that, go to council. And you would say, go, no, go at that point. And then at that point, then. We can go forward with the process. So there are two steps as to at that point, and then it goes to.
What would be the second process? Can you tell me that? Please?
You do, you do the formal petition and the formal petition will determine whether or not. They actually have, people are willing to sign their name on the dotted line for the actual cost of whatever the capital improvement is. Again, it has to get through council the first time.
Are, are we making a, are we? Thanks for doing this work, John. It's wonderful. Are we deciding today if this is going to be policy? Or do I have time to come and visit John so he can thump me on the side of the face and say, Rick, listen?
If you can get through the ice early tomorrow, he could, he can walk it to you, but we're bringing this policy forward to council tomorrow, Rick.
You very much, boys and girls.
This is the second time around. My memory serves me correctly. We've explained this is a framework. To take community requests and evaluate them in a very methodical, data-driven way. With all, to allow council to make decisions on it. You have my. Positive. Please bring it forward. Thank you.
Okay, Dan, you get the last comment.
Oh, goodie. Um. I think this, this policy is well warranted. Um, and, and it provides the framework to. As we've all noted before, like, let's get things done, whether we go through with it or not. But I think, I think that this policy is, uh, is a good thing and thank you very much for all your help and work. And yes, I, I will, I will be in support of this tomorrow.
So you've got some suggestions that you can make a decision.
I, I would ask, uh, that you. I, I, I think they, they have merit. Actually, I do think they have merit. Uh, but I do want to make sure that others in council aren't, are agreeable to it. And we could make, we could make the necessary adjustments or include them in the, uh. In the, uh, could we not include them in the, in the motion tomorrow? The, the changes are, yeah. So would include that in the change.
My, my, my only, uh. Further comment based on, uh. Your further description of this as a, as a primarily a fiscal. Frame, uh, framework evaluation is I had two items related to the OP and bylaws. You may wish to think about that and see whether it should be in. The respondent's initial request, or whether it should be one of the criteria. That are part of the initial review by staff. I'm, I'm just giving ideas out. I, and I think. No matter what. Request we have, we've always got to live within the, the, uh, bylaws and OP.
Okay, it is five after five. We have a couple more sections to go. The next part is an environment. It's over to Alice.
I think Earl was gonna, Earl was gonna step in for me. Uh, thought it'd be easier to do it.
In the interest of time, then I'll just stay right here. And if that's okay with everybody. Uh, the first item is municipality of West Nippising Resolution requesting an oratorium on aerial spraying of, uh. Glyphosate in the Nippising Forest and it's here, back here a little bit for discussion. Uh, the environment committee, uh, Alice and, uh, uh, councillor Barton and. Uh, Mr. Henderson and myself met. Uh, we have not, uh, been able to get the, in the, the depth of information to be able to make a. A, uh, informed decision about, about this. Uh, and more research is required is where, uh, we, we came. And so we're reporting back in the interest of transparency, but asking that we, uh, for some further time before we bring this item back for. For consideration, but wanting to make sure that, uh, that was, uh, uh, okay, uh, with you. Reeve Liverance or Mayor?
Yeah, no, uh, and so I, this is brought forward because of the council correspondence that we had. Um, the question I had when I talked to John earlier this week was, uh, do we know if this brain has occurred? And the answer sounded like it had, uh, and I think the question that you and Alice and would need to research is. If this is an annual thing. Um, is this something that we would want to weigh in on? So that would be the only ask that I would have that. If this, if it's already occurred and it's a one-time good deal, then we're not, we don't need to waste our time. If it's an annual thing. Uh, then that's when we probably need to identify that that's something that we, do we want to get involved in?
I believe in looking at Mr. Henderson too, to confirm that it is an annual event. Uh, but, uh, to be sure, and, uh, I think further research is, is necessary. But I know that there have been objections from First Nations, for example, in the past. Whether it's founded on strong scientific evidence or not, I have no idea, or we have no idea.
Just to clarify, it, I can't say it's used annually, but it's used regularly as part of the normal forestry process. To ensure proper growth of the planted forest. And so it is used in our area, used regularly as needed, um, as part of the forestry process. Uh, it is permitted and approved by the government. There are protests or concerns in Northern Ontario. I'm not sure what there are locally, uh, and, uh, and if we were to make any decisions, a prudent decision would understand from the forestry perspective, why it's needed. How important is it? Cause there's not many alternatives, um, and, but we can look more into that. And if it's something that is of interest, we can report back at a future date.
Sorry, um, councillor Emery.
I know, um, it's not always aerial. I know in our area along five twenty-nine, about three years ago, they did go along and spray. And so then they put up all the signs. So I can't eat the berries off the road. I can't, you know. Anything that goes into my property. I was even worried about the food in my garden. So it does affect everybody.
Okay. Councillor McLeod.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I, I hark back to the, uh, the article I wrote on the, the people that spray the backyards and stuff. I'd, I'd be very, very interested to know what, how do you pronounce it? Gli? I would, I'd be very interested to know, A, what is for? Why do they use it? And why is it needed? Oh, okay. Well.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Yeah. Um, okay. I'd, I'd still like, you know, do we have any idea of, of what it does to the forest?
We'll bring that back.
Please do.
Report. Thank you very much for the suggestion. I'm going to move on to Great Lakes Day in Ottawa, December eighth, 2025. And I look to Reeve Liverance, I suspect on this.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, just want to ask, uh, council to, uh, for resolution to get their, uh, your approval for me to. Uh, on behalf of the township, uh, representing, uh, uh, as a board member of the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. Uh, to grant my ability to participate in the Great Lakes Day in Ottawa. And I don't know if councillor Sheard would like to go as well. Or anybody else, but, uh, we are, we're at a point in time where we're fighting for every dollar. Uh, with the provincial and federal governments, uh, the Canada Water Agency, uh, I mean, the current, current government. Uh, went through and they were cutting the Canada Water Agency was budget by 15%. Um, so I mean, we need to make sure that people understand that Canada's water is important. And that the, uh, our, um, administration, when the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative says. The only way to demonstrate that is through numbers. And so that's why I think it's important for us, uh, certainly as a member of the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative to participate on this one. And also heads up, I'm going to make the same request to go to Capitol Hill down in the States. Uh, uh, from March fourth and through six, do the same thing down the states in 2026. But that's, I'm just asking to, uh, get council support to go and anybody else that would like to go to Parliament Hill on the December eighth.
That'll come back tomorrow then. Seeing no objection. Any comments? None. I just wanted to point out to the Reeve that, uh, I saw, uh. A, a posting that Vance Bataway, which was, who used to be involved as an MP in Great Lakes Cities Initiative. Is now the new CAO of, uh, a Great Lakes. It's called the Great Lakes Initiative or something. Uh, and, uh, so you've got a, a supporter on another organization too, that, uh. I'm sure you'll link, uh, to, and you also reference the invasive species action fund, which I think we talked about last month. And referred it for consideration to, because it doesn't have to be in until January to. Perhaps deal with fragmites, uh, in our neck of the woods, but that, that may come back too. Any further comments on the environment, except that it's getting late in my environment? Seeing none on the public works. I hear a fine wine calling.
Thank you, Earl, for stepping in.
Yes, and, uh. We're the exciting part, uh, and Scottish wine for councillor Ashley, uh, we're moving on to. Uh, if I judge his character correctly. Um, I'd like to pass this over to Mr. Badger and we'll go right to the operations and facilities information report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sheard. The first topic of report is annual road condition evaluation. This is something that we do each and every year. Our public works supervisor evaluates each and every kilometer of our roadway. And determines a pavement condition, um, index. When we look at our ratings compared to last year, we see an improvement in the surface treated category at the largest area. And that's due to the North Shore Road Project. Other aspects of our roadways, uh, were maintained well and with regular routine maintenance. And the road conditions throughout the township are holding up in good to excellent condition, which is a positive note for us. Continuing right along, Fragmites Management, um, topic. The topic for this report is that the township, the Archipelago in Georgia Bay Biosphere successfully delivered a, um. Initiative tackling Fragmites on Healy Lake Road in Blackstone Crane Lake Road. Two township staff and three Georgian Bay Biosphere staff, um. Managed 11 sites where over 500 kilograms of Fragmites biomass was cut. Uh, just highlights some of the initiatives that we've taken this year on Fragmites, but a reminder that. Um, we cannot with our staff tackle every Fragmites stand. We don't have the resources or the, or the, um. Time or funds to do that. We look to community groups. Uh, and support our other neighbors that are making initiatives as well. So very positive, uh, on this year's project.
Any questions? Reeve Liverance.
Yeah, I, I talked to, uh, Becky Pollock about this yesterday and, uh, and kudos to Josh, you and the staff. Uh, the Fragmites effort that this represents was road-based Fragmites. Um, and so I know that, uh, this is one of the things that we asked the GBB to do as part of their portfolio. On an annual basis to help us manage the Fragmites. Now Georgian Bay Land Trust provided data that they had captured. Oh, the prior provincial grant on the Fragmites locations on roads. We're going to have a presentation tomorrow from the Georgian Bay Forever and talking about the Fragmites in the water. And that's what Josh was alluding to is when there's Fragmites in the water, our staff. Isn't set, set up to be able to mitigate that. They can mitigate the Fragmites in the road. But that's where Georgian Bay Forever comes in and they help collaborate with Georgian Bay Biosphere. And to go after the Fragmites in the water. So you'll see that there's me some maps that you saw in this presentation. On the page nine of the report. And you saw a lot of red dots that are out in the water. Those would be things that you're going to hear tomorrow. That Georgian Bay Forever, uh, working with cottage associations is going after mitigating. And this is an, and unfortunately it's just the south. I believe that you've done Fragmites mitigation on northern roads in the past. Uh, but this is one that I think that, uh, I've already challenged Becky to come back and more of a strategic. Perspective about Fragmites to, uh, as a whole, not just land-based, not just water-based, but. As the overall strategy, because we've got three organizations, well, actually four, if you include us. That are talking about this and just make sure we're all working toward the same goal.
Through the chair, by the chair. It's getting late, isn't it? I, I just, uh, want to, uh, in my experience in this, organizing the first community cut in the north. Through, uh, volunteers of the Ratepayers Association. We used GUBF by training, uh, for the training. Purposes of that, uh, but it takes, uh, uh, it takes, uh, sort of a, a ground swell of, uh. Volunteers to deal with it offshore. Um, I came to, uh, previous councillors when I was on the board of Pavia to ask. Uh, how can the Archipelago help our big group of, uh, impassioned Fragbusters? Uh, with, uh, and receive little if, if no support at all. Came to council. I put that forward. How? Came to council, I put that forward, how can a municipality assist ratepayers in the battle to cut frag offshore? Uh, recognize the NGOs provide the consulting, but how can we actually facilitate the uh the cutting? Um, we also have that challenge where MTO is growing beautiful patches of frag and uh uh through our settlement area. I Highway sixty-nine uh partially remediated, but I I took an inventory of it. I mean, yeah, so you leave uh another three feet beyond it, you know, twenty feet high, thank you. Um, so we have, we, so I I take a holistic view to it as is a great approach, Reeve Liverance. There's no point in all our residents fighting the battle offshore if the conduit for frag isn't dealt with uh and sooner than later. So greater minds than our can help us, thank you. Uh, would would you like to?
Yeah, to that point, we've, we've met with Minister of Transportation about phragmities in the past, and we've communicated, and we've communicated with him that that in fact, the transmission vector is Highway four hundred, Highway eleven, if you go as far as high, because Algonkin Park is a watershed, uh, feeds into our body of water as well. And so if they have not mitigated phragmities upstream from us, we will be playing whack-a-mole for the rest of our lives.
True, and spraying uh to two feet off of the shoulder and not go the extra mile to the half acre that's beyond it is is an issue we have to deal with on Crown Land. But yes, thank you. Um, so we'll look forward to that, and I think we've officially finished the agenda, have we not? Thank you to residents and to council.